Okay, I can hear you guys. Thanks.
Oh, good.
Hi, what about Casey?
What about Luka case?
You need to hear us take it all?
Yeah, second years.
And then back to the place where.
Already? Okay, so. Um, in my memo, I spoke a little bit about why we were into the enterprise funds. This was supposed to be a general fund. We need, but we changed that because um your taxes being low. Uh, four point one million over four point five estimated and rounding up. For four point one, so we're not quite ready to have that discussion yet. Uh, so we decided just to keep moving forward and we got the um enterprise fund budgets before you. There is um little synopses for each one. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions. Uh, staff is here if you would like to ask them. So do you want to go with? Do you have any questions or would you like to talk to anyone in the departments?
The down, the worst part of the first one there. Well, I guess I'll start off. It just yeah, it's good to see revenue up in multiple spots in our harbor. Regular dry land storage fees. Well, that because a lot of people didn't want to put their boats back in harbor and they went over a year. So. Uh, once we go over a year sitting on dry land, uh, it goes from two dollars and ninety-five cents a foot to thirteen dollars per month. Uh, so that definitely helped. Yeah, but we did have a lot of boats coming out too and going there. And then monthly the slippies. Uh, revenue is up significantly as well. Yeah, I think. What I'm seeing is that there's not as many people renewing their annual stalls and they're going with the market.
You think I'll say another thing you might call our attention to or?
No, I I I'll tell you that I didn't go up in um. Annual stalls or any more fees or like annual or anything. Um. I don't know what that breaking point is, but it's starting to seem like we're there for the annual side of it. Uh, we're not getting the renewals. Um, if you look down like on each float, a lot of these stalls down there. So. So I'd like to sit at that and see where we're at next year and go from there. We can, we're gonna make budget. Um, things keep going the way they are for next year. So and fishing was better. So we'll get that raw fish tax to return. So.
This might not be a popular topic, but I'm gonna ask because the folks from Homer made the observation. Um, they came over to do some of the mariculture work and they were saying, wow, your crane is free. We have a card system. Is that something that you, when you talk with the, I don't know if you go to the port and harbor and administrators conference, I mean, your folks there talk about how?
Yeah.
Cut fee for service systems that.
I was just talking to Dave Astro a couple of meetings ago, but we're gonna look into that. It's a pretty big expensive. Buy-in for that to get the whole system. That's all pointers, site. Different things and we already see how that's working out with our electrical systems, not working yet. Um, but yeah, that's something we're gonna look at. Everyone has a key card.
Right.
Um, and a charge. I know it's not a popular thing. But yeah, it would help at least even if we left it low, we pay for maintenance and parts, annual inspections on.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some wear and tear on that on those cranes. So we, I mean. All part of what you do that those systems are. It is like a hundred thousand or?
Yeah, well, we have plenty of friends of sixty. You know, because you got all the key cards, a bunch of key cards and the readers and then where it sends it back and forth and everything. So, yeah.
Seems like that. I mean, obviously there's a lot of load with these, but. Not in town who could be helping you contribute to our system? Thank you. How how would that work for someone from out of town that doesn't have a key card? Would they have to come to the harbor master's office?
They either have to come to the harbor master's or you do a credit card style. You could do a credit card style. Some harbors are doing that.
Any comments online?
Uh, I I'm. I'm not concerned or I'm not convinced that the amount of money that it's gonna cost. To do that is really gonna capture more revenue. I mean, when you're seeing that people are not renewing their slips in the harbor already. It is, it is not a sign of health and it it just sort of goes to that idea of. You know, how how much money can you really get out of people and? Um, Homer's Harbor is very different than ours. I mean, Homer doesn't really have. A a large working fishing fleet. In the commercial sector that's based out of there for the majority of the fishing season. They have a, the coconut fishery is so much smaller and then it's a huge hub for obviously. Both that fishing Kodiak and Bristol Bay and Area M. And um so it it's fairly different demographics. I mean, you know, there's. We certainly can look into it, but I I don't know that this is gonna be the way to. Capture funds to really help us i- in the way that we're we're thinking. I mean. Maybe there's, there's some way to do it, but if if we have to spend that much money on infrastructure. Um, I I'm just a little concerned about what what we're actually gonna gain a- and. What the, what the fees are gonna be. To have to. Pay for that investment.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think you would definitely want to do some kind of a cost benefit analysis, you know? How many times does a crane get used and how big are the loads and all kinds of things and and yeah, do do some number crunching. And I think also talk to, I mean, not just Homer, but harbor, port harbor administrators from other small communities in Petersburg, Chicago.
Yeah, it's not something I jump right into without.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, it it definitely bears bearing into it. I'm not saying that that's gonna happen next week.
Right.
Or even next week, that seems okay. How they work, but if I I had heard mention of it and I wanted to. Uh, talk about it. That's. I mean, it might. Fair looking to. I was just gonna ask you. I think I could let Tony go before that um CPV tax or commercial, is it commercial passenger vessel? That's what CPV stands for. It's the. On beach three, I think it's.
The only acronym.
Right. Uh, I've heard it referred to as that in Riddler and I think that's.
Well, we have.
That's that.
Revenue, commercial vessel tax here.
That's that state one that comes back to us if you get some of the passengers.
I was wondering if you could just explain how the 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 points of that, like the state collector, you collect it?
The the state collects. I also honestly don't know a lot about it because as you can see, we don't collect it that often.
Right.
So. Can't remember. They had to be on board for so long.
So many passengers and it's it um a lot of the smaller boats that we get don't. Cause so that's why.
So there's some kind of passenger threshold.
Yeah.
Correct.
We could certainly bring.
Yeah, we have one big one this year, one big boat. Or a couple.
Yeah, we had a couple.
Heard group.
Yeah, heard group had a couple of enough people on board and then.
That was that.
Was that heard? Yeah, it was last year's. It was the last year's.
Or does it come up to you the year later maybe?
Yeah, I'm just curious how better understand how it works.
Since Tony's back up there, the curiosity, the used oil, uh, as far as expenditures in twenty-four actual over fifty-nine. It's usually thirty to forty pounds in mine, so. Um, if we ship out antifreeze, that's included in that. So antifreeze is very expensive to ship out. So every other, about every two or three years, we have to ship out antifreeze and oil. Yeah, and it depends on. What they burn in oil, you know, city shop burns it, burn it.
School.
School burns up, yeah.
Okay. Other harbor. Enterprise fund questions? We can move on to sewer development test partners. That comes. Yeah, so you folks have questions. You're learning. Revenue or expenses, we're looking at the success and. So sewer enterprise fund shares some stacked with water.
So the way that sewer and water operate is pretty much fifty fifty for staff, trucks, equipment. Um, and then some of the expansion, you know, like tools is split, but when it is a sewer part, it is sewer. When it's a water front, it's water. Um, but the staff does it all, you know, they do both water and sewer. And so we've always done it fifty fifty. Waters revenue was not as good as anticipated and so. Uh, we are, that's the transfer. In order to help. And keep personnel funded and expenses within water. Both budgets or water was. Cut.
You're doing something good.
I know. But I'm starting a while. And it's a long time ago. It used to be waters sewer together. I don't remember why it got split. That was before I was.
But so that the eighty-nine thousand three hundred and three that's. Being transferred to water, is that the amount that was needed or is there some?
Where is that?
On the page reads.
That was, you know, that was in.
Yes. Uh, you study your record.
It's um, so it's a different um transfers out. Brains for. But that's yes, we will need to.
Yeah, that was to cover the deficit that there was in the water budget for next year, even after um adjusting rates. And uh, doing some pretty extensive cuts through the operational budget. We cut a lot of repair items, uh, temporary staff hours were taken down to zero. Um, you know. Things that we know that we have to absolutely take care of or replace next year are still included in the budget, but there are items that were cut out that we're hopefully fund maybe in twenty-seven or, you know, just see how we go with that. But, um, yeah.
Um, no, I do have a question. I got a question on the overall condition of the infrastructure.
So, yeah, well. Hopefully we'll have a sewer water master plan to you guys, hopefully by the end of the year. Uh, been working on that and the drafts. So we've done a pretty good look at our infrastructure. The sewer side realistically, you know, there's a, there's two big items really. Um, the wastewater treatment plant itself, it needs. Either replacement or major overhaul, which neither option is, you know. Uh, inexpensive. Um, and then there's, there's a, the other item is, uh. The.
Foresting or.
Yeah, the foresting, yeah.
The lift stations.
The forest main and the lift station and Odeac, because that's where everything from the city comes to one point in Odeac before it's pushed over to get over to the wastewater treatment plant. So there's upgrades that need to be done there as well. Um, the water side is more where we have a lot. The water part has more infrastructure overall because it has multiple plants, multiple water sources, catchments. Uh, tanks, and so we do have a lot more infrastructure on the water side, and that's really where a lot of the improvements need to take place. Um, the Orca catchment and the Heeny Creek. Uh, no, sorry, the Emergensen catchment, they both are in need of major repairs. And luckily the Orca transmission line is in need of total replacement. We're working with NVE on that and so. That actually looks like that's going to be replaced in full um as a joint project with them.
But that's from the source.
Yeah, that's that's from the catchment down to the uh, down to the treatment plant. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, on the sewer side, we have two large items, but then on the water side, we have, we've got. A list of multiple smaller items that are still all, you know, million dollar plus projects.
Yes, question on just what this one item means. Um, it's on the. The six. Um, what are penalties paid for utilities? About middle of the page. Not penalties paid from utilities. Not sure what that is.
I would have to look a little closer, but I'm thinking if when people are delinquent on their um accounts. And pay the penalties to get their services right or back on or um, okay. But I will double check that in the follow-up.
We have been making great efforts to. Get people current. Um, staff has been doing a great job getting payment plans in place, reminding people about their payment plans. And um, it's been very successful. It's been really good, um, both for water and sewer and refuse. So I think. It's, it's really important that we get these current because. Also, the water. Fresh and we can't turn sewer off. Or refuse.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, member kids.
Is it? I guess, is it in our best interest then if we're saying? A lot of these revenue and expenditures are. A lot of them are shared. Not all of them are shared between sewer and water. Is there an option to combine these enterprises? I don't know what that looks like. But just asking the question, seems like with the redundancy, if we're borrowing money from one enterprise to pay the other enterprise where they're already shared is. That's where my question's coming from.
I don't know. I would have to look into that. I know it was done in the past.
Okay.
I don't have her knowledge. Kathy, do you remember that?
My, I only thought, and then I would have to ask if you're people too, but I only thought it's for grant purposes to separate them out. There might be funding for sewer versus water. And it was easier to identify costs and needs. By those various entities. Same thing's true with museum, library. So that's why I only thought that. Any other um. Sewer or water. Enterprise questions? So there is a. I'm trying to see if there is the same. There isn't. Depreciation. Did you see that? Yeah. Oh, I see. No, I I'm sorry. It was budgeted in this year. It was a transfer to. Depreciation reserve, but that's not actually leaving me that was like. Very challenging to get over that.
Um.
So from page seven.
I think Sharon could probably explain how those things work because it is all.
Um, when. All right, when the two thousand twenty-five budget was developed, um, that was the anticipated action was that we would bring in that revenue, have the expenditures. Um, at the end of the year, if that is able to happen based on our actual savings, then. In water. We do not perceive that. Based on the short. Short or a shortfall.
So you, um, you're, and you're having master plan. Assessments or whatever the right term is about worked out for both the sewer treatment system and the water treatment system, right?
Yes.
We've got both of those and so we should have. Some kind of a, I don't know, roadmap may not be the right word, but like. At least an outline and some estimates and cost estimates.
Yeah, it in, it includes, so it it gives you just an overall background of how each system works, what the systems are currently made of, when it comes to their different components. Um, then what are the short-term and long-term infrastructure upgrade needs? And then they more defined look at what those um bigger items are, what their costs are. And then the plan is actually to even have a section at the end that will be really high level, but. What potential rate increases could look like, uh, depending on how we want to fund those projects.
Sounds useful.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's a good document so far. I'm really just hoping we can get it wrapped up here sooner than later because uh, we thought we had done center, but yeah.
So any other questions about water and sewer? Anything from online? Given okay. Don't we move on to um. Refuge departments. You're back again. So. The same questions, is there, do you want to walk us through this one or there any others you want to call our attention to?
I think it'd be great if you could kind of talk about the permit, new permit and some of the things that are mandating for us to do that are part of some of the in case in the past.
Yeah, so. We have a lot of new changes coming with the permit that uh. Is uh in the process of being issued for our next five-year operational period. Um, basically that permit is how DUC dictates to us. How we must operate the landfill, like what certain conditions have to be met. Um.
Five-year period?
Yeah. Um. And so with this upcoming um permit, we are going to be required to install a um bare fence. Around the active cell. Um, we're currently looking for funding source for that. We've put in a. Uh, application to the state revolving fund program. Um, the cost of the fence, even though it or state revolving fund loan program, even though it is a loan, they do give forgiveness to communities based on certain factors. Um, I won't know what the actual forgiveness is for this, um, if we were to pursue it, but. I have a idea of what it could be and it seems like all of that, most of the loan would be forgivable. Um, so luckily I, if we can go down this path, I don't expect that to be too huge of an issue on our side. Um, they're also requiring the installation of air monitoring sensors for methane monitoring. Uh, also a one that's really going to hit us big, both uh how we do our operations as well as costs and long longevity of the landfill. Is uh, we are no longer allowed to excavate below ground level to make the cells deeper to give them more capacity. Uh, we now can only use from ground level up to a certain height. Um, so we are going to lose a huge amount of capacity in the landfill, which is going to shorten the life of the landfill. And it also is going to increase costs operation wise because before we would excavate material, have that off to the side and use that material to cover. Um, the cells we go. We're not gonna have to mine material from a different portion of the property to create cover. For this, so.
Has there been any look into incinerators or anything along those lines to? Decrease the amount of trash that is being buried?
And now, were, was it, did you guys work in it or were they in before you?
Um, there's been multiple attempts at looking into it. I think the last one was Shay looked into it and that was a smaller scale, although it looked pretty cool, but it was built from. So I would guess my answer would be not lately, um, but we could certainly.
Yeah, and I I will ask because I've spent an incredible amount of time in Yak Tep and.
Their landfill is. Pretty clean, you know, they they have a lot more sorting and burning. Um, I don't know what they use. I didn't look into it just based off of the general appearance when you show up and. Separate all your trash and how they take care of it, it seemed like a. A lot cleaner and taking up a lot less space.
Yeah, it would be interesting. We used to burn at the landfill. Um, a while ago and then the fire at the landfill. And DUC then mandated that we have this. I think they call it incinerator box, but really it was just this huge. Metal. They didn't have a lot of definition of what they wanted it to look like, but basically nothing could touch the ground that was being burned. It had to have sides. It had to be monitored at all times. And um, we kind of went down that road for a little bit until we couldn't. Really get a firm answer on what exactly their regulations were, and that may have changed by now because that's quite a while ago. Um, and maybe even when Richard said, maybe sixteen percent.
From what you said, it's, it's just gonna get more access.
Yeah, I I don't know how this is going to affect. Us yet when it comes to operational costs. Like I said, we have to figure out how we're gonna do this. We have to. Create our own cover material now from a different source. So I mean, there's gonna be the time that now it takes for them to. You know, get that from wherever it is, bring it to the active cell, store it there, even the need be. Then eventually, I mean, when we get through that area that we've now excavated for the next twenty years or whatever it is, we're gonna have to then fill that area back in so that we could use that area for landfill. Like, you know, so.
Well, confranchising with the consumerism, I think twenty years is probably not that.
Oh, I I put, I just pulled that number out. Yeah, yeah. Um, so I don't, we don't, we just worked on a landfill closure plan update that is likely going to now have to be immediately updated also, which is additional costs that we're gonna probably have to see here at the refuse department. No, I, I just pulled that number out of my head, but yeah, yeah, um, so I don't, we don't, we just worked on a landfill closure plan update that is likely going to now have to be immediately updated also, which is additional costs that we're going to probably have to see here at the refuse department soon. Since this is now going to affect how soon the landfill is going to have to be equipped, so. Where this is all stuff we're working on, I don't have the full details yet, but. In one of the upcoming quarterly reports, I'll make sure you get more info.
Thank you, yeah. Can I ask them the um. Requirement at D E C, uh, D E C permit. Not going to be upgraded because of water table concerns, intercavitation?
Yeah, they're, they're concerned about the water table, um. We, we have some really good water table data that we shared with them. Um, during very, very heavy rain events, we have some spikes that it will go, you know, it, it stays pretty consistent with its ups and downs, and then there's some spikes. Um. We were hoping that we could work with them that, you know, maybe we just can't excavate as deep and we stay where those, that average high is, but they decided to use the highest highs as the benchmark, which is basically, I don't, I don't have the numbers, but it, it doesn't allow us to excavate pretty much at all.
There's no recourse to uh. How else was finding?
Not that we've been able to find a way to do so, we've talked with the person who's in charge of our permits, uh, his boss, um, you know, we, we work with a consultant who deals with D E C constantly. For other jurisdictions, so they know how to. You know, really understand what the regulations are and what is and isn't required, um, because D E C will sometimes try to just push some things, um. So we, we know how to push back here and there, but it doesn't seem like there's much pushing on this one.
It's all big question, I have lots of ones.
I mean, other options is, you know, we changed to a different classification landfill. Um, have to do cell linings, which again is just more costs and all that sort of stuff, so I mean, there is an option to excavate. It would just be being a completely different type of landfill with all sorts of new regulations and. Additional costs.
So. I mean, in addition to the bare fence and methane monitoring, are there any other? New requirements?
Um. Then, and the excavating. Not being able to excavate, though, losing the capacity and then the additional costs from having to source that material elsewhere on site.
And we do, we have, there are, I don't know how many years. Done mandated water tests, quality tests.
Yeah.
We have six wells, five wells.
Four of them.
Four wells. Um, and there's, you know, place by engineer and environmental and, and we have not had a. Oh my god moment. With the um, samplings, they've all come good. And. But it's just a mandated. Why, it's hard. Especially done. Because along with the loan payment for, I mean, the loan, even if it is almost fully subsidized, we still have to make a loan payment.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Are you still allowed to use the crushed glass as the armor covering?
Yeah, we, we still collect the glass from earth and then use that and fix it in.
Remade on that one then.
No, there hasn't been any issue.
Just kind of offered that, um, there was a small group that met today, uh, sometime last spring, there was a, a federal notice of funding opportunity for the solid waste infrastructure recycling program, and then they. Uh, put on pause and now it's reactivated again, I'm not sure why, but I don't want to ask too many questions, but the deadline is December twelfth. And M V E would like to apply, and they were gonna, we just met today, and I said, well, we should email the city and let them know what we're doing, but we're trying to. Get a little bit more information, but I think the idea is to, um. No, the idea is to, uh, it's one point five million, you can do it over five years. And is to get some container. Of equipment to do composting and it would lift, to do food waste composting, and you could do more than just plants, you could do meat and. Um, almost anything except for giant bones, pretty much, you can, um, put it in compost, and so. That would be, and, and I think the thinking is to, you know, do this on a pilot sale, but what I hear happening is like methane is the third. Largest human. Cause the source of methane, uh, contributing to climate change, so that's, I'm sorry, landfills are the third largest source of human caused methane. Um, contributing to climate change, so. So anything that's why D E C is requiring methane monitors to know what's happening. Um, but between the bear problem and methane emissions, if, and I realize this is, you know, this is something that would have to happen nationwide, like for the last. I don't know, seven or eight generations or, or longer, our, our waste model is a big hole in the ground, and if we rejigger that, it's going to take time, it's not going to happen, right? But could we look at how we do things differently, how we handle waste differently, which I know is expensive and it's not gonna, you know, it's going to take a lot of time to shift how we do that, but. Um, in terms of, you know, what can we incinerate, what can we reuse, what can we crush, what can we keep out of the landfill to lengthen? The likelihood and, and, um. I'm just hoping that the city will consider at least supporting these pilot efforts to. To, to, you know, look at kind of how this equipment would work, can it work in on climate, what can we do to, um. To be diverting some of those waste streams away from the landfill in ways that could help.
Yeah, I, we, uh, I was, we came out that group this spring, I was like, yeah.
Yeah, and right, and I, but they're going to be telling that to you, but they just, uh, we just got reading the today and. They kind of felt like, well, we've got some more questions that we need to get answered before we ask, um. If the city can help, they said, should we, should we write, say, can they help, and I was like, what are we asking them to do? Oh, yeah. Yeah, we need to answer that, so that's. That's gonna help.
Yes, and there are some options available now, you know, cardboard. You know, cardboard container, yes, we burn it, but it doesn't go into the landfill, the glass. It gets to the landfill, crushed it, putting it on the top of it.
Yeah.
Um, aluminum cans get shipped out, nets. So there are, there are ways people could, yeah, help right now.
Absolutely. But I think, yeah, yes, council member, Nicholas.
Um, yeah, you know, I, I think this sort of plays into some other things that I've been hearing about, um. From. Can you hear me okay?
It's really conflicting with everything up here, sorry, thanks. Go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Uh, yeah, I, I think, you know. Just given the situation with some of those challenges the city's facing, I think. It, it would behoove us to do some community outreach, and I think this is a real good subject for that, just talking about, hey, you know. We. The cost of doing business as the city is going up, here's one of the challenges we have, and just reminding people that, you know, because, I mean, I've lived here my whole life, and I just found out recently that our cardboard recycling. Basically just means that it gets burned, it keeps it out of the landfill, but I, I think there's a lot of opportunity to educate the community on. On some of these things where people can make small changes that can really cut down costs for the city and, um, you know, just make. Make things a little bit easier for everybody to deal with, so thanks.
Yeah, thank you, that's a great point. Small changes often. That's up.
Yeah, so.
Okay, yes, council members asked.
Um, I think the last time we met, you did, uh, tell us what the massive amount of frigging volume would be, what was that? Or the work you were going to do for the.
For our community. I always mix them up, what, if it's a water project or a sewer project, it's, it's one point five million from. One of them and it's seven hundred and fifty thousand for the other.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thanks. Um, any other questions? They were online about the. Refugees. Do you have any reports kind of this way here on the banner, the work going on here?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, actually just about wrapped up, um, I'm sure everyone's seen the impound lot, uh, is done, but. The cars have been moved over there. Uh, cameras are up, so please have monitoring of it, so it can meet all their needs for keeping their evidence vehicles, we're being with that over there. Um, which has freed up some space elsewhere in the city, uh, for, you know, us to get some other activities done. And then the, uh, the actual like transfer facility expansion, most of that excavation pad, uh. Is pretty much done, we're going to let it sit for the next few days, see how it does with some rain, there might be some touch up that needs to be done and things like that. Um, and then the plan is, um, all of the. Construction dumpster boxes and metal scrap boxes, they will come out front along with the home refuse boxes, so, uh, there will be basically a public side, which will be the front area, we'll pull in to do all of your disposal. Um, that'll leave the back open, um, so the crew has a safer place to work, so we don't have traffic going around the building. Um, gives them space to actually, uh, get some of their tasks done a little more efficiently as well, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Want to take a tour? The high number, why?
I never go there.
Yeah, no, the, the impound lot looks really good, so, if you haven't seen it, oh, some of it looks nice.
Thanks. Okay. So, don't see any other questions? That you ran out of hot seat?
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, Odiak Park Enterprise Fund, that's where we're at.
Please, yeah, that's one of those options, that's a great idea, is, you know, has some really positive.
Any questions about, well, yeah, this year was just a big turning point, or the campground, I think it's a great resource that we really have. I'm excited for the future of it.
We've told them about some of your upgrades, if you're checking in.
Well, we've, um, have key mark codes at every site now, uh, people can check in, um, at whatever time, because in the past, the ferry had been coming in late at night, so now they can check in. Um, then when we're doing rounds every day, uh, we just make sure it's placed. At out, and that they're in the right spots. Um, we just touched Facebook them, you know, we developed a lot of relationships with people this year. And, um, we've also just had an understanding that if you want to stay for two weeks, you stay for, you pay for two weeks, so. I mean, it just isn't rocket science, so we've also just, um. Yeah, we've had, uh, the new boiler that was installed, um, is working great, so I think that was a wonderful upgrade and cut down on maintenance that was happening on the other boiler. Uh, too, so.
The darky, you mean?
Um, at, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So. Yeah, it worked out great, we got it up and running, we, we maintenance, um, right before we have done, like, didn't have too much of that, you know, you know. Times in between opening and having that running, so. It's good.
So also, you could buy us some more, so you could.
Yes. First, really, uh. Trying to make it a more family friendly and also service people that are coming into town just to. Um, visit it for a remote camping experience in Portova, um, having firewood, uh, you know, when they check out, they can. Um, get fire starter, uh, smores kits. Have firewood delivered if it's on our route during, um, when we're doing the, uh, rounds every day, um, so. Yeah, it just is, it's great, we've had a lot of families stay there. And they've had a great time, we've had really good feedback about it too. So I think just changing the mindset, marketing it differently, marketing it everywhere. Um, talking about it a lot, making, you know, it's, it's really changed, so I think. Um, I just want to continue to reinvest in it, I'd love to get a new playground in the future, you know, just continue to keep. Building it up and having that. Place for sustain.
We probably report on this in your reports, but you must track, like, how many, um, how, how do you measure it, is it by rental night, like by? The number of one night, the number of nights that. All the spaces are rented, or?
Yes, that's how we report it, my, um, my quarterly reports, you'll see, um, what that is plus and revenue, um, I think you'll see a drop. You know, in the history of Odiak, a drop in revenue because we changed the camping spaces, so they're not so much like Sardine, so. Um, that does cut down on how many people are actually staying there, but it's very comfortable now.
Yeah.
And the tent spaces that we've, uh, developed are really a big hit too, so.
Those are going to use.
Definitely, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, so we've already gotten calls this year to book it for next year.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
I think you were totally booked, weren't you, for sound again?
Oh, yeah, definitely, I mean, we were looking for other, everyone was looking for other places to stay, so. Um, or could we just like knock on someone's door and see if we can stay with, on their?
We've got a lot of problems on parking lot.
Yeah, exactly, so, I mean, it is a resource, like, it's a great resource, um, I think, if we could just continue to invest in it if possible, it's just going to grow. Also diversifying and having maybe something in the winter time too, um, if we could do storage there, anything like that to support, um, the park even more, so it's. Um, we're just looking forward to. Looking at all options.
There's room for a partnership, but you could talk to the Copper River Watership Project, because they have the. Conservation easement land out at, on Plum's bit, and if part of that conservation easement was to, there was an limited use area, there was to allow horse and tent platforms. And, and then.
Yeah.
We haven't had the bandwidth to pursue getting funding for that, but if there was any kind of joint, I mean, then you best can team up, and I'm just thinking about if you need more.
Right.
Tent, more space for tent camping.
We're blanking. I also talked to a lot of other campgrounds that are, um, comparable sizes in Alaska, and we share like our virtues and. So, um, and there is, you know. People know all that.
But yeah, the first thing has those spots are all the way.
Mm-hmm. So. Standing.
Great.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, and this might be, if someone can provide some historical context, why, why was the, uh, Odiak slough set up? As an enterprise and not just tied into the parks and rec?
That is a great question, and I do not know the history for that, but I can find out.
I think there was because. It was supposed to be a standalone and it had to make its own money to succeed, and. Never really has, but you're doing a bang up job now. Yeah, there were a lot of years where they talked about privatizing.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just privatized it first.
Weather concessionaire.
Yeah, yeah, right, so, right.
Okay. Nope, no, that's good, and I guess if there was a benefit to it in the past, I'm just wondering if this is a model to pursue for. Uh, the future skater's cabin. Replacement, but if there's not a benefit, or if we need to track funding a certain way. That's where my mind was going, I just, not knowing the history, if, if. There was revenue options by having it a standalone, but maybe not, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your questions, okay. Thanks. So. I'm not hearing. Any major changes, we're not asking exactly any major changes, so if we presented anything.
I just want to make sure you all have the accurate information, it's a five hundred thousand dollar forgiveness for wastewater loans and one point five million for drinking water. So, thank you, uh, we have to qualify up to those amounts, so that's what our community level is count that.
You said five hundred thousand for wastewater and one point five for drinking drinking water? Thanks. Damn, we're quiet, why is it looking at us?
It's.
Come back and forth between you and me. Stop laying papers. You're just thinking. Yeah, I hear you thinking. Now it's looking at you.
It's going the way.
Did you want to add anything else?
Um, no, I think, I don't know, we are looking at some interesting times for refuse water and sewer. Yes, mandates are coming for water and sewer as well as. Um, so. Yeah, we'll keep turning, stay ahead of the curve, I guess. This. An interesting. Compromise, like how we can. You know, change things around and still do what we are doing, because that's not going to go away, and you know, so it's, it's, um. Yeah, it's going to take a lot of thought process. To even try to incorporate some of those some clues, but. Yeah. We need to think about it. It would be nice if we could get a water, uh, refuse master plan similar, maybe we got a grant for both of those. Plans, so they were completely paid for.
Look after that, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think, too, I'm, um. That's why we wanted, um, a group there next to everyone to talk to the city, uh, I mean, they've got some ideas about things that they could request funding for. To help with, um, making. Collection of certain waste streams easier, keeping themselves off us. And maybe there's a way to build some of that into this grant, or some kind of analysis of the waste streams and. Yeah, just a little bit of that, this solid waste infrastructure we set over there. You said could be get ready, I need to do a master plan, I was thinking maybe this is.
Well, yeah, the master plan, you know, it just is the whole. Yeah, I'm issuing from bare fences. Consideration, nothing much, just recycling, yeah. Which.
So has D C, D C, I'm curious, uh, I mean, do they expect, like, it. So they want the city to build a fence and keep bears out, and is there some kind of? Success rate, or do they have, like, a zero tolerance, like? One bear, one bear too many, or not worth it for that?
So every time they come and do an inspection, we get a grade.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, this green. It's a percentage grade, and this last time they did this very hard for the bears.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I kind of assume I'll go there, but I guess.
I mean, there's not like a statutory pass table that says, like, this many bear incidents puts you in the OK territory. The unfortunate thing about D C is they have some very clear rules. And then they also just have a lot of. This is how we say it needs to be done in their interpretations of those numbers, um.
Without any guidance.
Yeah, yeah, talking to them is often vague and leads to more questions than answers. And it's not just with the landfill, I mean, it's with the water and sewer as well. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, it, it, it's hard to navigate with them because there isn't a lot of clarity. Um, it's likely going to be something that it's like, well, now that we've reached a benchmark. Once the fence goes in, do they see declining activity over time where they come out and do their inspection, and? Other reports, like, are bears showing up dead or things like that, so there, there's not a clear. This means you guys are doing good, unfortunately.
Okay, one quick question, this new fence, I haven't been out there, I mean, you're gonna, it's not been installed yet.
No, not at all.
Is there a fence in the world that bears out?
I mean, they, they, we, I can't speak for Aaron, I don't know what he's heard from other landfills. But D C says that they, you know, had other landfills that have shown success, at what that means, I don't know, again, I don't know if that means that they had. X number of bears and now they only have this number, you know, so. It's going to have to be heavily engineered and designed to withstand the attacks that are going to, you know, happen, there's going to have to be. Feet and fence buried below ground, keep them from digging in, we're also planning on electrifying it. Um, so, you know, I guess the hope is that after a couple seasons of them being deterred, we, you break that cycle. Of, you know, bears bringing their cubs, and then. Eventually, the problem goes away, or so we hope. But, yeah, B D C basically said that doing nothing is not an option, so. Which I think we're all in agreeance, that it's just been an issue of how are we going to deal with it.
In what?
There's no logistics, we got that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of logistics.
Yeah.
And electric fences are very sensitive.
Yeah, they're hard to stay, for sure.
Yeah.
And our weather.
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, the constant litter monitoring and debris monitoring and. Keeping things cut off from the fence, you know, you take one piece of grass touching the wire and now the whole fence is useless, or at least the microporion. So, goes back to just more man, more manpower costs and all that stuff, so.
I just, I, I was, I, I'm hopeful that we could get some traction with this, um. Idea of. Food-based composting and move toward that, which I understand is a big undertaking, it's a big shift, but. The idea of spending a million dollars on a fence instead of spending it on infrastructure to help us make that transition. Is a little bit crazy making, but I understand that, you know, there's a near term and a long term, so we got that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I was just coding at the meetings, and, um, the people I was staying with had a. Unit that was about the size of a, you know, larger kitchen garbage can, and it basically. Composted material, because they also have major bear problems, so I feel like it's a decent thing, I, I mean, it's. It's not a cheap, um, device, I think it was like eight hundred bucks, but I think it, you know, through the course of the year, I think it provides basically. Eight, eight hundred pounds of compost for them, which turns into soil, so. I think we could probably have some kind of working group to figure out, like, the cost benefit analysis, so like. Here's how much we're spending currently, here's how much we're going to have to spend, is there a way we could do a rebate program to get something like this, or, or some. Bear safe method of doing this, and, and. That, that might be a, a step forward, I, I, I feel like our plates are already very full, but, um. Maybe we could, uh. Delegate some of this to, you know, the watershed project or one of these other organizations that it would be in their purview.
Yeah, and like you said, with the, with the, uh, the goal and the message, that this is about how we hope that at least. Well, I, I don't know, keep city costs down or keep them from going up faster. Where we're at, so, yeah.
Yeah, it saves the people, too.
Mm-hmm.
People who are paying refuse.
Right, right. And I think about the pallet loads of compost that get imported by the hardworking person every year, so. I've also thought, like, I mean, this would take a lot of number crunching, but is there a way to turn this into a side business for somebody who's. Contracting from the city. For two city owners. All things that we can look at. Okay, um. Folks want to take a minute right before. The public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, let's adjourn the work session, thank you.
Just going to mute. What am I muting, just YouTube, can I do that?
Is it the same link for the rest of the night? Okay.
Yes, you say on, I'm just going to mute our audio right now.
Okay, I actually will probably have to hop off for a few, but I'll be back for the regular session at seven.
Okay. Is that what I'm doing?
Yeah, they did a. Yes, yeah, so they have it on that, so.
Yeah. Can I stop the YouTube? And then start it again? And as a look at this, you have to stop the YouTube and then start it again? Um, look at where it looks.
I think that is going to be, if he have just looked at that.
Oh, look it.
Yeah.
It even has pause.
Yeah, because it's back to it, so I'm just turning it off.
Okay, I just paused it.
Um, because last time, when you just.
For more of this news.
Zoom recording.
I'll be ready. So we will get texts or not? Okay. Call the three-time public hearing of November fifth to orders. And I would have to call it. Mayor Smith here. Deborah Adams here. Aaron Hanson. Casey Kinsman. Oh, he said May of yeah. Mike Mickelson. Why is it on me? Where did I go?
Did you go, Rick?
Thanks, Aaron. So why don't we see maybe Mike just got off.
We're just gonna go with little guys are absent. Wendy Rainey here. Kathy Sherman here. Dave Zastro.
Here.
That's a formal answer. Thank you. Okay, so we're here. In a public hearing to take public comments on ordinance one, two, three, five and ordinance of the council of the city of Quirrell, Alaska, advising the transfer of three hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred, five hundred and one dollars and sixty cents from the general reserve fund, also the Virginia's the permanent fund to the refuse enterprise fund for the purchase of the twenty twenty-six Peterbilt five twenty dumpster truck. Does anyone want to comment on this ordinance? Bigger dumpster truck, different dumpster truck. Any comments at all? But then.
Can we add a new state's here?
Yeah, today. Today.
I guess Aaron goes to the bag.
Okay. Suppose we take a short recess. And I can set them before the very end and see if you want to comment or let's take a recess until fifty-seven. Precise, very precise. Not that it's too long, but you don't have to sit here and look at each other.
Now, let's see.
They took down their six months ago. He's just here for more.
Yeah, I know.
Appreciate it. Okay, ready? Yes. All right, so we're coming back to the, we're bringing the public hearing back to order. It's a public hearing on ordinance one, two, three, five about transferring funds from the general fund to the refuse department enterprise fund for the purchase of a dumpster truck. Does anybody have any comments on this ordinance? Nobody wants to talk about it. Okay. Anybody online? All right. We can adjourn the public here. I don't want to adjourn. The ordinance will be that.
Uh-oh, that doesn't look like it's doing it for me.
Well, he may ask me.
Right, and did you see that that was a thing?
No, but that is, he initiates that.
Oh.
Yes, but he, she said there's free review and he initiated it. We will accept his initiative.
Yeah.
But we don't, we're not there yet. Wow, that'd be way different. I'll take it.
Okay, are we ready to call the regular city council meeting of November fifth, twenty twenty-five to order? Join me in the pledge of allegiance. First, you can call the roll or more roll call. Mayor Smith here. Deborah Adams here. Aaron Hanson.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Mike Middleton.
Here.
Wendy Rainey here. Kathy Sherman here. Dave Zastro.
Here.
That's all of council. Great, thank you. So the next thing we have is the approval of the regular agenda. And I would just like to note one modification on your new and miscellaneous business that I don't we will discuss them in, we're going to switch number fifteen and sixteen. They appear in the opposite order in the packet, so we'll take the Odyea Park subdivision one first and then the lot thirty-two original town site. So are there any other modifications to note on the agenda? Okay, hearing your objection, we'll consider it approved. Are there any disposers of conflicts of interest and exportation communication regarding any agenda ideas tonight?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to just disclose that with the land sale that's for blocks one and two, Brian Rutter is a pilot for my fishing group and Nathan Doll is on my fishing partner, so just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. Unless they're paying you for your vote, I don't think I mean, you're not, you don't stand to gain any.
I, I do not. I do not, and I haven't talked to them specifically about this, but I just wanted to let that be reflected.
Great, are there any other? I guess I will just disclose that I'm going to speak under audience comments, but I submitted a letter of interest for, for pieces of city property and I just disclose that to folks, it's not something that I really benefit from financially, but I wanted to just mention that I realized that there's, there could be appearance of a conflict of interest, so. Okay, communications by petitions for visitors, we have a couple of guest speakers tonight, so I think first comes a presentation from James Newhouse regarding our twenty twenty-four financial audit.
And did you need to share your screen?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I got the easiest.
That's the way. Well done. Glad you know more than I do. Except by aloud and then what happened? Oh, now he's doing it.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Jen, you have the floor.
Um, so I, I did this last year and I, and I like presenting more of a synopsis than going page by page from the financials, just because it just the, the numbers of the financials, if you guys are well informed board, which you are, it's kind of old hat. And by doing this, this gives a better synopsis and it kind of cuts it down to about, you know, fifteen minutes. So our responsibilities as auditors, we're essentially responsible for conducting the audit, ensuring that we form and express an opinion on the financial statements that have been prepared with management with the oversight of the city council are presented fairly in all material respects in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. We're also responsible for the planning and forming of the audit to obtain reasonable, not absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free and material in the statements, whether caused by error or fraud. Because of the nature of the audit evidence and the characteristics of fraud, we are able to obtain reasonable, but not absolute assurance that material misstatements will be detected. We evaluate the city's controls sufficiently to address identified risks of material misstatements due to fraud and controls intended to address the risk of the statements due to management overrides of other controls. We are responsible to communicate key and writing all significant deficiencies and material weaknesses and internal control identified in audit and reporting to management all deficiencies noted during our audit that are sufficient of, excuse me, are of sufficient importance to merit management's attention. We are also responsible for conducting our audit in accordance with professional standards. What we do does not alleviate management's role and responsibilities. Boilerplate it. The, the organization is, is responsible for setting sound practices and making sure that it's a top-down approach that internal control over financial reporting is adhered to and established. And also that the organization has made all records and financial information available to us as the auditors along with, with providing the auditor with a letter confirming certain representations made during the audit that include, but are, are not limited to management's disclosure of all significant deficiencies into, including material weaknesses in the design or operation of internal control that adversely affect the city's ability to record, process, summarize and report financial data and the acknowledgement of their responsibility for the design implementation of programs and controls to prevent and detect fraud. The city council is responsible for the oversight of the financial reporting process and internal control over financial reporting, ICFR. The city's management and council are responsible for establishing and maintaining internal controls to prevent, detect, deter fraud, setting the proper tone and creating and maintaining a culture of honesty and high ethical standards. An audit is not designed to detect fraud. I'll just, I'll just throw this out there. There's a lot of misconception that, that auditors or fraud finders were not. And this is a article that came out about fifteen, twenty years ago. In a hundred cases of fraud, I, I believe it was less than twelve percent was identified through the audit process. About thirty percent was identified through whistleblowers through the, the employment of the organization. Our audit results, we issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements for the year ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control, nor did we report any significant deficiencies in internal control. We've not we identified no material misstatements. We did propose two adjustments. One was regarding the PERS, Gatsby eighty-seven adjustment. This is a, a, a large nebulous number that's on your financials. I believe it was about the, the pension liability is sitting at a little over five million dollars. That, that's based upon calculations provided from the state with their supplemental information on their purse with, that they issue. Most organizations don't have that information or a way to calculate that readily available, so we do that. We do that calculation for every government that actually participates in PERS, so we, we help and we assist with that adjustment. That means there's also an adjustment to the, the ends and deferred inflows and deferred outflows from the pension and OPEB. We also had a small adjustment for investment. It was, it was less than probably two thousand dollars. We did perform a federal single audit. We issued an unmodified opinion on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. That was dated nine twenty-nine, twenty-four. Those three programs were what we looked at as federal major programs. There were no findings or issues, nor did we have any control deficiencies or other findings that were required to be reported under the uniform guidance. The city also had one major state program that we audited. That was the, the Port and Harbor project. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance over the major state programs as of twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance over the major state programs as of twelve thirty-one twenty-four. We did not identify any material weaknesses or internal control deficiencies over major programs, nor did we report any sig- report any significant efficiencies, um, over major programs, nor did we find anything else that's, that's required to be reported under the state's single audit compliance supplement. Any questions on the financials themselves?
Got any questions online from? Remember, Ken, Nelson?
Okay, uh, the next report that we, we issued is a letter to the governing body. Uh, for the most part, uh, there really wasn't anything of substance with that. You know, in doing our, in performing our audit, we have to, we have to assess, uh, a few different estimates by the organization. The, probably the three largest estimates are the depreciation expense, the landfill closure costs, and the allowance for doubtful accounts. Every year, you can, you can come back and say, you know, it, uh, we don't think our, our, the, the landfill closure cost is reasonable, we need to up that by two million dollars. That, that's essentially an estimate, and, and so, um, when we look at that and, excuse me, when, when, uh, representatives from the organization say, you know, this is what the landfill closure costs are as of twelve thirty-one twenty-four, uh, we look at it and we determine whether it seems reasonable or not. Uh, i- if it's reasonable, then it's an estimate and, uh, basically, uh, you know, we include that, those amounts within the financial statements. Management's estimates of these items are based on estimated useful lives of assets and estimated collectibility of receivables. Uh, we evaluate the key factors and assumptions used to develop these estimates and determine that it's reasonable in relationship to pay, in relation, and, excuse me, in relation to the basic financial statements taken as a whole and in relation to the applicable opinion units. Again, we do not identify or obtain information that indicates fraudulent activity. Uh, we would propose two, two adjustments, one for the PERS adjustment and the one for the investment. We also issued a letter to management. Uh, management letter comments are items that I, I would say are less significant, that would not normally be recorded in the financial as findings, but potentially items that, uh, you know, would be best to clean up or improve upon. We had three findings, sh- excuse me, we had three comments. The first is collateralization agreement. Uh, we noted that there's a significant amount of uncollateralized cash on hand. Uh, essentially what this means is, i- if you have an account with one financial institution and you have over, uh, five hundred thousand dollars of cash in that account, the FDIC limit is two hundred fifty thousand dollars per EIN. So, um, there, you would have two hundred fifty thousand dollars of uncollateralized cash in that bank. There are separate collateralization agreements you can purchase from financial institutions. Um, there's also, uh, separate investing tools within, uh, different banks. Some are, uh, zero balance accounts where the money is transferred out at night into investment accounts, and then those are covered, uh, differently, uh, through, I think it's SPIC. You'll, you'll need to look and see which would be the best vehicle for the city. Next comment was internal control over bank reconciliations. During the audit, we noted that there were two bank accounts that did not have current reconciliations in the accounting software. Uh, we recommend that the account reconciliations be performed for all bank accounts every month within the system. This will help identify if there are any activity that was not recorded or recorded incorrectly. Uh, last comment, um, regarding the Casell, uh, counting software. During our audit, we deserve that while there has been an improvement since the prior year, some accounting personnel are still becoming familiar with the Casell soft- software. Uh, we recommend continued training for all staff, we use assistance to further enhance the proficiency. Ongoing training will help reduce the risk of errors and ensure more efficient use of the software. Are there any questions regarding any of the letters or reports?
Jim, I was just gonna ask about the collateralization agreement, and I didn't understand what type of agreement that was, but I, I have a little bit better idea now based on your comments, but I was just gonna ask, you know, what guidance you can provide to the city, um, to, to execute that, so suggestions you have, I'm sure would be welcome, but maybe there are any...
Just a second, let me stop sharing for a second. Um, I, let me open up your file, and I can tell you exactly, or maybe a little bit better, what we're looking at.
Yes, I'm thinking that overall, given that it was a single audit and we were coming off a year when we were closing our, when the city was closing off the, uh, rebuilt grants, that it's pretty impressive, it's a, it's a great compliment, I think, to city staff that it was a clean audit and that there were not major findings and that everything was bound to be, yeah, um, in working order, so, yeah, I just wanna call that out and make sure city staff, um, get some recognition for the work that they, for the elements work they must have done, um, to make that happen.
No, a- and tha- and that's what we look at, you know, uh, the acronym I like is BTB, Better Than Before, right? Um, I, I always want my, my organizations that, that we're working with to, to strive to get better, and, and essentially these management letter comments are, that's what these are, are issues that, you know, you're not a hundred percent, let's, let's work on getting you closer next year. Um, so right now, I'm looking at your, the, our cash reconciliation, excuse me, our cash statement, and, you know, the, there was, uh, two point eight million dollars sitting on FB, FNBA. Um, that means, uh, roughly two point five was unsecured or uncollateralized. There was, um, you know, some, some, uh, four point seven million sitting in money, in money market within KeyBank. You know, most of that is unsecured. So we're, we're looking at, let's see. Roughly, roughly seven point nine million that's unsecured. Or under collateralized.
Thank you.
Hmm. And I, I, I know that's, uh, the financial institution, that, that's a fairly low risk, but, uh, i- it's still one of those comments where we're required to say something.
That's a number that's...
Yeah, a general question to Jim and or, um, staff. Um, you had mentioned Jim about, uh, the Casell software, accounting software, that, um, staff, uh, could use a little bit more training to be more, um, proficient at using that software. We went through a whole change in our software, accounting software, not that long ago, I'm just curious, in general, is this software we're using now, um, working better, it's, we're able to do more with it, and it's functioning the way that we hoped it would when we made the change?
Right, this, I mean, Cheryl can talk to it too, this is the software we had previous to the software that we got.
Yeah.
And we had invested in city staff to train, um, and we are better. And we will continue to do that because we have positions completely built and things are moving at a good rate, and to get that audit with all of aggregate funding and everything is no small feat. And especially when we through that transition of going into and out of your software, it was very good. And we did an amazing job. So, yeah, we will continue to do that, to provide training and work with staff on that.
Do you have more you wanted to walk us through, Jim?
No, ma'am, that's, uh, that, that's pretty much covers what I wanna talk about, unless y'all had any other questions.
Questions from the council? Without it or?
Yeah.
Just, um, a quick question about how to read about purchasing collateral insurance, is that what I'm hearing? Is it, and is it necessary?
I, I'm not gonna say it's unnecessary, because, because our, the AICPA says, you know, organizations should have this, if you don't have this, then it should be a management letter comment. Um, I, I think what you'll need to do is, is evaluate the cost benefit of that. Um, each, each financial institution's gonna have, have a separate cost associated with that, and I think, uh, I, I think the, the council's gonna have to determine, you know, what's their tolerance for risk on that versus their cost.
Have we ever had collateral insurance? Cheryl left us at our...
I know, as far as I know, we've had these discussions with Gavin, we've talked about this in the past, it's not new information, and Gavin has so many different ideas and thoughts on that, and can, there's some information back. But it's, it's, it's been in our audit every year for a very long time.
Unfortunately, that won't go away unless you receive some sort of collateralization.
Except for Warren is... Whatever, everybody, thank you. So, did you have a comment, Mike, or were you...
I, I was just saying, thanks, I, I, I wasn't familiar with that, um, and it's nice to know your history, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, great, all right, if there are no further questions, um, the online or... Thanks so much, Jim.
You're very welcome, have a good evening.
Bye, thank you for inviting us.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, our next guest speaker are some folks from DOT to talk about the Prince William Sound Ferry upgrades, and if you guys wanna come up and join us at the table, you can, um, use this chair and we can pull up another one. One of you gets the comfy one.
Yeah, um, would you have a presentation prepared, or we can just go over the project, you have a preference, Kristen?
Uh, I don't, I don't, do you have it on thumb drive?
I have mine on, yeah.
Just do it through Zoom.
You wanna just...
Okay, even though we can be real short, see, oh, it's fine.
That might be as far as my, the band out this way. Yeah, I'm the true shirt.
From Wolf's or... They're not on.
We are, we are the host of the Zoom. I don't know the... Most of teams. You can just skip this over here. Thank you.
And then you share this with them. We have that share screen.
Is that unnecessary?
Oh, those stuff were not on there, you know, that... Yeah, so they'll have to wait up.
Sure, we can just give an update on the project, um, that's okay. We'll introduce ourselves real quick, guys.
Are you just speaking to the megaphone so that folks who are listening online?
Is that better? Yeah. We'll introduce ourselves real quick, I am Christy Gentleman, I'm a regional environmental manager with the Department of Transportation in Juneau with the South Coast Region.
Yeah, hi, I'm Nate Gary, I'm the marine design manager with DOT in general, and, uh, yeah, we take care of all, uh, statewide marine assets.
And we are here to provide you with information about the Prince William Sound Ferry Terminal improvements project. We are close, uh, to completing our National Environmental Policy Act review, and we have a draft environmental assessment that we have out for a public review right now. That review goes until November eleventh, and we have a project website where the draft environmental assessment can be, uh, reviewed, and that draft environmental assessment documents all the consultations that we have completed, uh, to date, and we looked at impacts to the human and the natural environment as part of this environmental assessment. So, um, I will hand it over to Nate just for a project overview of the port of the ferry terminal, and I can run through the environmental section something.
I'm sure, and I will add too that there's a hard lobby, the upper draft upstairs in the library, and there's one out in the atrium on the Steters Tavern table. It's a wooden beam, frankly.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, uh, chief is for that quarter of a ferry terminal. Um, really, not a lot's gonna be visible for a person that just takes a look at it. Uh, the new ferry, the ACF that's replacing the existing ferries, uh, that I hear are not serving here right now. Um, the, uh, yeah, the replacements, they're newer, they're a bit bigger, they're about fifty feet longer, ten feet wider. Um, so the ferry terminal, the existing ferry terminal was designed for the smaller two thirty-five class, the Ponzi and the Aurora. Um, so essentially what this project is gonna do is going to replace a couple of the existing more structures with, uh, a stronger, more robust structure, um, so it'll be replacing two dolphins along the Fendering Line, and it's just, uh, yeah, something that can handle more wind blow, uh, yeah, and handle a, a bigger boat. So, um, yeah, the goal is to be able to, uh, uh, yeah, also accommodate, uh, this boat carrier smart fuel. So we're going to make some modifications to the fuel system, uh, to the sewer holding system, uh, some modifications on the float so that, uh, I'm not sure if any of you guys have experienced any troubles with trying to back a trailer, uh, down the float onto the ferry. We're trying to make those go away, and, uh, and then there's just some general maintenance that needs to be done out there since, uh, when the, uh, float was installed in oh-six. So, this will cover those modifications and, uh, uh, wrap up design on this project in September of twenty-six, and, um, yeah, and then we hope to advertise it right away, uh, construction, uh, we expect, uh, maybe some preliminary construction or construction to start in, uh, late twenty-seven, maybe some of the uplands work, but the, the bulk of the construction, um, we're gonna see pile driving equipment out there and, uh, big things getting pulled out and, uh, new structures put in, and that'll happen in summer of twenty-eight, spring to summer of twenty-eight. And, uh, the project should reach, uh, substantial completion in summer of twenty-nine. And, uh, yeah, it'll be ready to handle the ACF, which does not have all the technical issues of, uh, yeah, the two thirty-five class, which, um, one of those will actually is planning to be retired as soon as we get these Prince Williams down. Very terminals upgraded to handle the ACF. And yeah, that's the engineering side. If you guys have questions, I'd be happy to chat over.
Do you maybe want to just um, touch briefly on the work in Chanega and Teteleka too? Just
Yeah.
Some people happen to
Yeah, absolutely. So uh, in Chanega, um, we're actually looking at building a all new ferry terminal just right adjacent to the existing structures. Um, at first we had intended to run a new transfer bridge and uh, it would have the ferry tie up along the face of the existing dock. Um, we did some cost analysis and uh, the face of the existing dock, the water there is deep. It's at like a minus seventy foot moon line. And so by building a new terminal, we can pull the structure into about the minus thirty foot moon line. And so by having it shallow water, we can have smaller structures that don't have to uh, be a step to handle the uh, just to increase spending money. Um, so for the same cost, instead of using the existing dock that was constructed in nineteen ninety five with some new features, we'll uh, build an all new uh, AMHS exclusive use facility just right next door to it. Um, and uh, yeah, and so it has benefits that there's no loss of existing uh, frontage space along the mooring structure which um, we would have cut some access off to the back of the dock by putting the ferry terminal on there. And um, we owe credit for that idea to Chip with P M D. That was his brainchild and it really thrown into you. So um, uh, timeline for Chanega and Teteleka is going to be pretty similar to Cordova. It'll be um, the design will wrap up on those in spring of twenty twenty seven and advertise right around that same time. Uh, and construction on both Chanega and Teteleka will begin in uh, spring or summer of twenty twenty eight. And also with substantial completion in twenty nine. Um, the work in Teteleka, uh, it's going to look a little bit different. The existing fixed tidal ramps, um, we're going to pull those out and replace them with a transfer bridge. And the seaward end of the train bridge is going to be supported on a mechanical lift system. Uh, nobody guys are familiar with the uh, the system at either Valdez or Whittier where it has the big towers and uh, yeah, and then the cable lift on the uh, the lift beam underneath. Um, so there's really big waves that come into Teteleka and so we had to go with a bit more complicated structure. Uh, just so that we can keep all of the marine infrastructure up and out for water, except for the time when the ferry is coming in. And so then uh, they can fire the generator, start lowering the bridge so that it's in place once the ferry gets there and and then raise it up again. Uh, yeah, we've had some bad experiences with supporting the seaward end of the uh, bridge on float and rough weather environments. Uh, Wes Davis was a really bad one that we just uh, switched down in twenty nineteen and so uh, take those lessons learned to Teteleka and uh, yeah, that's kind of a big high level just of what we're planning. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and I'll just add, so the economic development interest in my um, my desk job, my day job, um, where is the um, the grantee, we're working with DOT on implementing this. And I just wanted to say that Nate and Christie are going to be, there's going to be another open house tomorrow from eleven to one uh, in the education room upstairs. If anybody wants to come talk in more detail, look at the drawings. For all those listening online at home, please spread the word and tell your friends and neighbors.
Awesome. Now I'll pass this back to Christie to talk about the permitting.
Well, um, because the project is dual funded by the Maryland Administration and the Federal Highway Administration. We did follow the National Environmental Policy Act as I mentioned earlier. So we have multiple permits and consultations that we completed and that are in process. Uh, we did a section one oh six National Historic Preservation Act consultation with the State Historic Preservation Office and consulted with tribes. Uh, so that has been completed. We also received an incidental harassment authorization from the National Marine Fisheries Service. So during construction, you'll see marine mammal monitors out, uh, making sure that we're monitoring zones for in-water noise while out driving. And then we're also currently in the process of getting the similar permit from the Fish and Wildlife Service for sea otters. And then the last major permit that we're working on right now is an hardcore permit because we're working in the water. So we will be obtaining an individual permit for all three project sites to make sure that work in waters of the US covered during the project. Now, that's what I have to share for the environmental. Do you have any questions for either Nate or myself?
So we need to see it happen, see it in the works.
Yes, we are too.
We are too. Yeah.
Uh, again, if you do have any comments or questions, feel free to reach out to either of us and the comment period is open until November eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um, so we can move on to chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions. Oh, I'm sorry. It's good. I didn't mean to. Yeah, okay. Audience comments regarding agendas. Does anybody want to come up and talk about?
Do you mind if I go first? I have a baby that needs to go to sleep.
I don't have a baby. I just want him to go home.
Emily Anderson, do I say my address? Okay, Hill Box one thirty one three. Um, I'm speaking under correspondence or in response to correspondence on the agenda. Uh, thank you, mayor and council members. As you know, my position in communications was recently cut as part of pa- part of this year's budget process. I want to take a few minutes to share my perspective. Not just as the person in that role, but as someone who's worked within the city and who deeply cares about Cordova's future. During recent budget discussions, I've noticed a recurring pattern of funding outside entities and programs in the name of community and economic benefit. While at the same time reducing internal positions like mine that have a direct impact on city revenue. That's a contradiction worth considering. Like Kathy Sherman, whose comments at the last meeting I agreed with, I've seen both sides of this issue. The operational realities inside City Hall and the broader impact these budget decisions have on the community. It doesn't make sense to invest public dollars externally while reducing the internal capacity that actually allows the city to bring money in, track it, and use it effectively. When we cut from within positions, system improvements, or even the ability to communicate efficiently, we weaken the city's ability to function as a healthy revenue generating organization. The work doesn't disappear. It just gets redistributed among fewer people, which leads to burnout, slower response times and less time for the proactive work that protects or creates revenue. Every time we remove capacity, we shrink shrink our ability to sustain the very programs we're trying to protect. And in some cases, we compromise safety. My position specifically has had a direct and measurable link to city revenue through grants, communications that drive compliance, like sales tax filings and other required submissions and projects that create new sustainable income. But this isn't just about me. Many staff are feeling the same strain and frustration. These cuts don't affect only one department or person. They ripple across uh, the entire organization. When we lose people, we lose capacity, creativity, and the safeguards that maintain our operations and standards. Continuing to fund outside agencies without holding them to the same expectations of sustainability sends a mixed message to staff and taxpayers alike. It is ultimately the responsibility of City Council to determine city funding priorities and to account for the cost of maintaining city operations and services. Funding for outside organizations, while valuable to the community, is not the city's financial responsibility. Especially when it comes at the expense of the city's own essential functions and staff capacity. At some point, we have to stop asking city employees to do more with less while implying that the value of their work is somehow less important than that of outside organizations. Thank you.
Caroline. The city. Next to just say what I say in the overtime is just that comments are limited to three minutes.
Hi, Nancy Bird, uh, one one Lake Avenue. And I'm here to speak to two issues. Uh, the first one is uh, the funding cuts that are being proposed for the outside agency. And I think it was just being referred to the Chamber of Commerce. And while I I can appreciate having been a city employee and suffered through a layoff myself many years ago. Had a hard time for the city. Uh, and I've also sat in your seat, so I am very, very sympathetic to the role you guys have to play now and try to balance the various interests that there are. Um, I would suggest, however, that the chamber has been providing a lot of services for the city that are important and that the city hasn't been able to provide at the same um, amount of money. And then if we really are facing the kind of cuts I'm hearing that we're facing um, rather than zeroing it out, find some way to reduce it fifty percent some amount and try to ease the pain over so that some of those chamber programs can continue and wait out for lined up and funding services. The second issue I wanted to address uh, is the proposal um, received um, from Camp Two's for purchasing the lot down in the harbor. And uh, I just want to say that that uh, I know this one has lots of emotion and uh, very different differing opinions. I did submit comments to the request that the city put out and uh, said that I thought it would be better to try to save that kind of land for long-term use of the city. And you know, perhaps lease portions of it, but try to make it available for the public um, uses. The uh, you know, the, I felt like the responses that we were being asked to give to the city um, came multiple times to me in email and I saw it advertised and I was very impressed and thought wow, we're really, we really want to hear from the public. And then once the public responded, I didn't hear a word. Except from people on the opposition side to selling this property. And they came out saying that there were far more comments opposing the sale and then in favor of it. And so I found it interesting. I don't know what the, I mean, I I never saw the city put out any kind of official response of what did they receive? And such. And I guess I would just urge you to be aware that it is really difficult for the public um, the city council in comment. And um, the online comment was very nice. People, I think, probably did it more often because it was less. So I hit my three minutes, huh? Um, so I'll try to wrap up. But I just would urge you to be more clear in giving your reasons for what direction you're going to take on whatever the issue is. And I urge you to maybe consider, I haven't heard anybody suggest, the old Science Center building could once again become an ice house like it was in the mid eighties. But uh, throw out probably too late in the game for that. I also do want to applaud the proposal having, I'm wrapping up, yes. Um, having a a recognition of public interest in a park. Um, I really would urge you to, if you go the direction of selling it, make sure that that really does happen and make the public some interest. Thank you.
Hello, Kathy Renfow, we're wait, we're on the row. Um, I am tweeting to some of the correspondent items in this packet. And um, I wanted to this express um, how I know budget seasons are always challenging and been excruciating for everyone. And so just share my gratitude with all of you for work you're putting in to try to create a sustainable fiscal situation for the city. I understand um, why you're doing what you're doing. Um, we've been talking a lot about all of the painful cuts that have had to be made and discussed. And um, I'm worried that we're not um, that we're under underestimated impacts uh, on the revenue items. And I'm worried that some of the revenue items in the state budget might be overestimated now that we are looking at some of the cuts that we're making. Um, I shared an email with uh, all council members today that I hope you got a chance to see. I also shared it publicly through chamber channels that show that um, if the the chamber stops doing the work that it's doing, then it can, it could result in a direct impact to the city revenues of two hundred thousand dollars. And I think the numbers were very clear. I showed um, all of my sources for um, the direct data that I used to create that. Um, we are, you know, we are asking for thirty five thousand this year for a part of the union to get through. Um, we appreciate the in-kind support continuing and we're asking for an agreement moving forward. Um, the Cordova Center uh, revenue, I think, was uh, was underestimated after speaking to the Cordova Center Coordinator by thirty three thousand, which is pretty close to what we're asking for. And I think that's a well-known revenue source. I know that we are looking at um, some lower than expected revenues that we want to try to make up for. And I would encourage that as we try to figure out how to make that up, that we do make sure that we're not going to make um, cuts that are going to impact our revenue so much that we're going to be in a worse position. Um, we have the accommodation tax to fund this work. And uh, there was agreement from council um, a couple of work sessions ago that that funding, that that's what that's for and that's what that should be used for. And that's what we want to go towards in the future. And I'm concerned that if we wait until twenty twenty seven and we take funding away from the chamber in twenty twenty six, there will be no one at the chamber to do that work for you in twenty twenty seven, even if you have an agreement. Um, other revenue sources that the chamber has, the that will remain uh, after the city's funding is removed, if that is decided, that will cover less than one full-time staff. The lease that we have with the city um, has some requirements in it for some minimum levels of visitor center services and hours that would be required to the chamber in order to maintain our lease. Which means that um, the the one part-time staff that would remain would have um, to prioritize that work, which means little to no business support, which means less uh, much less membership revenue for the chamber moving forward. Little to no events for festivals, which means um, not only less uh, sales tax and accommodation tax for the city, but less sponsorship and event revenue for the chamber. So really, um, by removing this funding for the chamber, you are removing the, our matching funds um, that we would, that we would use to be able to create this other revenue. So I'm asking that the city, um, if you stated that um, if the chamber stops doing this work, we're no longer going, you're not going to pick it up and the city's not going to do it, but you're collecting an accommodation tax for this work. So what's going to happen then? Um, so thank you for your time.
David Allison, two oh three Whiskey Ridge. Um, mayor, councilor, staff, along come no seek. Anyway, I have a few things to chat about tonight. Enterprise funds. Supposed to be individual business units. They need to pay for themselves. If they can't pay for themselves, then we need to charge more or not provide that service. Have somebody else do it. But uh, in in particular on that, I'm talking about two two items on your agenda tonight. One, uh, the um, garbage truck. Uh, I'm certainly in favor of using permanent fund to pay for that, but it it does need to be a loan and it does need to have some interest attached. Uh, you make ten percent interest this year on your investment funds and and uh, three percent is certainly giving them a a good discount, but I don't think giving them that money is uh, a good thing to do. Same thing with the, the, you're proposing to uh, pay for the soil remediation for the water treatment plant with general funds. I think that should also be a loan because that's uh, directly related to that enterprise fund. So uh, anyway, that's what I have to say about that. Uh, the chamber, uh, when the bed and rental tax went into effect, um, that was promised that that would be split with the chamber uh, in order to get their support and the public's support. So I think uh, thirty four thousand is a, is a big discount for that. And I think you should consider that. Like Kathy said, if you sell them to zero, you're not going to have anything to go back to in in the next year. Uh, Camp Two's proposal. I like your proposal. I think that it's a worthy cause. At some point in time, the city needs to promote business. And now kind of back, I think the public use aspect of that was good, but we need to figure out a way to make sure that that happens. Um, oftentimes we get these proposals, sell the land, lease the land, and the proposal doesn't ever uh, come to fruition. So we need to do that. Uh, proper property disposals. Uh, I think RFPs are the way to go with almost every property disposal that we have. Um, except for maybe special circumstances like the except for maybe special circumstances like the, yeah, power plant where they produce the, the land and that lot's been theirs for a long time. So I don't have a problem with going direct negotiation with that. But almost all of the property needs to go out for, for RFPs to give everybody a fair shot at it. And, and that's all I have for now. I have some more after, after the meeting for you. But thank you for your volunteer service. It's appreciated. Thank you.
So, yeah, I was just going to ask whether there are any further audience comments? But you're, you're going to be guest speaker.
Audience comment?
Oh, yeah. I wasn't sure if you were.
Hello, Kate Tridow, 501 First Street. Kate Tridow, the person, that's a school board member. I'm commenting on the outside entities. Thank you all for the budgets. I know budgets are frustrating. I wish I had more solutions than complaints. But I'm here to support the outside entities because I do feel that they do a lot of work and without them, other organizations, including the city, are going to have to absorb that work. And I can say like, oh, we can absorb that work, but I think it'll become inevitable. For example, Girls on the Run, Ski Hill, Let Me Run, like if they're not happening, then the kids kind of, they come here and they hang out at the city hall. And that puts a lot of undue stress on the librarians. I don't know if you guys try to hang out in the library after, like on a Friday, for art school art, a little bit of chaos. And that is a lot of work for the librarians. And same for as a partner with the chamber, they do a lot of really great work. And if they were to go away, that work could be absorbed by other partner organizations. But we're not as skilled as the chamber. And like we, the Science Center and the Forest Service could try to put on a shorebird festival. And we talk about birds, but we don't know how to advertise and we don't know how to get people here. So we would be missing that strong component that the chamber has. And so $35,000 is a lot of money, but it's also in the grand scheme of things. I think it does a lot of good. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Belle, Belle Mickelson, 206 Lake Avenue. And I wanted to speak about the land disposal proportion of Lot One, Block Seven, Eight Tidewater Development Park. And first, I wanted to read some of the letter that Mary Ann Bishop wrote. She's out of town. And it says, Dear City Council, this is for Mary Ann Bishop. Under no circumstances should the city be selling this property. If the city insists on changing it from a public use to private use, it should be a lease. So eventually it can come back to the public or it can be canceled if they don't do what they say they're going to do. And she was kind of upset that the city had the special planning and zoning meeting. And so it could get on the council's agenda without time for the public to be aware of write letters. What's the rush, she says. Also, when Camp Two's proof that the Army Corps of Engineers told them no to their own dock, and she said she didn't see any application of public review. She agrees, and I do too, there are viable alternatives that can support their fishing and process operations. The public's desire is to keep this area public. If we decide to pass this land disposal, I've worked with this issue on the ballot. I'm confident that once people know what an unreasonable deal this is for the people of Cordova, that we will prevail at the polls. And here's the letter, Susan. And I guess I would say from my own standpoint that I really want to emphasize I'd like to see it left as a park. I think we really need covered spaces. And I think that we can build community support to, to pay for that and have food trucks or some other local businesses in there. I, I also agree that the old Science Center might be a very appropriate place that would, could be used for ice processing, fishing and ice processing of fish. So anyway, I, I think the, the fact that tourism is, is an alternative and recreation for local Cordovans is really important. And it's just a great piece of land that's worth millions of dollars. So anyway, I think if the city does decide to do something, that it should be leased rather than sold. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Seattle Carpenter, Field Box 1030. I would just, I would just like to say, I, I hope council considers that we are a commercial fishing town. You know, we've got world-class trails. We've got so many things for recreation that are available. And it, it's really hard to see this struggle we're having over this, this breakwater that's basically what it was built for was to keep the harbor from being damaged. And our fish for Camp Two, and one of the biggest issues that they have had is being able to unload their tenders anytime in the night. The issue is, the way I understand it, they can't use a fish pump in the harbor because of water quality standards. And I don't think when the breakwater was built, there was any consideration of it as being used as a park. I can, I can see where it could be a multi-use spot. But I would really like to see the council work with Camp Two to come up with some solution to where they can get their fish unloaded in a timely manner. Sometimes it can take six or eight hours to hand grill fish out of a tender. And they buy a lot of fish. There's been periods recently where they bought over forty percent of the fish caught in a period. They don't have access to a fish pump in the situation they're in now. So if, if you're not going to work with them on a lease or a purchase, I would hope that you would work with them to figure out some sort of solution that works for them. And maybe down the line, things will change. But the city, I, I don't know how much revenue the city gets from commercial fishing, but I assume it's a fair amount. And the residents that live here that fish are really dependent on having as many processes as possible and having them be as profitable, profitable as possible so they can share those profits. So, yeah, covered spaces are great, parks are great, but we have quite a bit of that. And we don't have enough access for the commercial fishing operations that we have right now. I would really hate to see those operations get messed up to where they can't operate in a profitable way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Thank you for your work, first of all. Appreciate the time you guys put into this, the time to listen to everyone. I'm Christina White, and we're mostly Scallywood Grove. I guess I just came to speak about that harbor entrance slot. Yeah, not, I, I see both sides. I understand we want to make, we want to make it easier for the commercial fishing to thrive. We want to honor that work and like Camp Two's business. They, they're committed to this community and it's, it's pretty awesome to see. At the same time, that space is really great to watch the boats come in. It's a beautiful community and in a sense, it's our front door to, you know, the harbor. That's the gateway. So I guess just thinking about what that, you know, how that affects people when they're coming in. And, and there should be some kind of, yeah, a way to cooperate and see everyone's needs and meaning with them, having to exclude one position or another. So that's what I'm proposing, whatever that one is. So thank you again.
Thank you. Where are audience comments?
Just come up and sit in the seat for a minute.
Setting my timer.
Yeah. I'm just commenting as Kristen Smith, 507 Fourth Street, from the Prince Rain Sound Economic Development District because there is an item in the packet tonight that we have, or which we have submitted a letter of interest for the lot in the Northville Development Park. And I wanted to say two things about that. One is, I know this has, could have, could raise a lot of hackles because of the appearance of self-dealing, you know, as somebody who sits in the mayor's chair. But I wanted to say that we've been working on this issue since I started with the Economic Development District in 2020. We've done a Phase One demand assessment, a Phase Two construction and revenue projections. And this year, we completed a business plan for a shared seafood and mariculture processing facility. So this isn't something that has just come up within the last, well, since March of 2025. It's something we've been working with several partners on for quite a while. And I just also wanted to urge the council to consider the alternative where you take, have a request for proposals, request for proposals. And that you have a choice of options and that's the one that I would argue for. And that we would, I mean, we would respond whatever you do, but that's the one that I think we could respond most effectively and represent the benefits to the community of this shared processing facility. Thank you.
More audience comments? Okay, let's go to chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions.
I have to get my address this time. I seem to throw the schools' address.
There's two names, there's no representative.
Hello, I'm Kate Tridow and I'm here from the school board to remind everybody that the superintendent survey is up. We are urging everyone to take the survey because the school board values community input on the traits and skills that you would like to see in a superintendent. Even if you don't have a child in the district, you can still take the survey because the superintendent will be a vital community member, community partners, who work with the school, interact with the superintendent. The superintendent will be here talking with council members about the budget. So it would be great to have everyone's opinions. And if you have children who have grown, graduated, and you have experience that we'd like to hear. You can access the survey. It's going to be online and it's in your packet. It's on our Facebook page, the district website. The survey closes November 30th. And then the application for superintendents closes on the 19th of December. We will meet on January 3rd to get three finalists. And then those finalists will visit Cordova and have their final interviews and meet the community January 18th to the 20th. In other news, the Cordova High School was named number one high school in Alaska for the second year in a row. And Mount Echols was ranked number thirty-seven in elementary schools. And there's a hundred and sixty-eight elementary schools. So we're like top-tier elementary schools. And I think a lot of that has to do with the dedication from the community. So thank you to the city for all of your support and your funding over the years, our awesome teachers, and just the dedication and involvement of our community members. You all make this happen. You're how we get to be number one high school. And it's a great place to have children here. Our camp period ended on October 24th. Our final enrollment number is as projected, three hundred and sixty-five students. So that's what we're going to be getting our funding based off of. Just happens to be one student per day of the year, which I think is fun. Fun fact, fifty years ago, Cordova's K-12 enrollment was five hundred and fifty-eight students. So we're a little smaller than we used to be. Our fiscal, or fiscal year 2027 budget cycle is going to begin in December and there'll be a draft available for community members and the board to view in Jan, in January. We take our funding very seriously and we are trying to save money where possible. We are on track to receive premium rebates of $22,000 this year thanks to training in the area of property liability and workers' health insurances. Our regular board meeting is going to be moved to Tuesday, November 18th, instead of the usual Wednesday because many of our board members are going to school board training in Anchorage. And we welcome community members to attend the board meeting on the 18th or any board meeting. If you can't make it in person, we are now streaming them online. So they're a little more accessible and we'd love to have your input on school issues. Thank you.
Eleven-thirty is the survey date?
Yes, November thirty.
And December, what is the?
December nineteenth is when we close the application window for superintendent. With, and then we'll select our three, January third, and it will be in town. January eighteenth to the twentieth, we will be having an open community forum so the community can meet the potential superintendents. Any other questions? Thank you.
Chairperson, Nancy. Susan Smithy or Budler or? Is it? You got it? Now we're in, we come to the consent calendar.
Oh, my God. I'm going to take a roll. Where do you consent in?
On the consent calendar, what are you writing?
Yes.
Mike Mickelson.
Yes.
Aaron Hansen. Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Deborah Adams.
Yes.
Dave Zastron.
Yes.
Consent calendar is over. We've taken a fair amount of minutes, but you don't have any bids, proposals or contracts. We come to reports of officers. Let's see here. So I do have a merit report, which now buried in here. Anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did already mention the open house tomorrow for a great upgrade. You said you were going to become a community leadership roundtable?
Yeah, so the main themes that came out of that were housing, economic diversification, childcare and transportation access, concerns about healthcare and CCFC. And in terms of opportunities, we talked about tourism, agriculture, food. Through the Department of Defense, which I think had to do with energy projects that Clay is working on. And
There's also a location for maybe, you know, a great number for rock.
Say that again?
The product of that, I hate this word.
Oh, right, right, right. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And also the need to put pressure on, on us, the Department of Transportation, to finish some projects. There are other books that we keep hearing. I believe we have several projects on there that can, get, they get ruled out, they get ruled out. So what can we, we should be advocating, especially during the legislative session coming up, to advocate for those. And I think there's concern too about the highway in general, just from what's happening on Road Two, Forest Service, Road 220, with the river eating away at that road and moving to the south towards the highway. Yeah, so. The answer is to have, but.
Group effort.
Yeah. We did here from the school district, which I know we're all aware of about the need for in the not-too-distant future, for looking at renovating the high school. That building is
Old.
Yeah, aging and, yeah. Nothing is, it's just getting older. It'll be getting older. The one thing that I was blown away by, Cordova Telephone Cooperative or Cordova Wireless has been getting millions in broadband grants that I think were awarded. um, has been getting millions in broadband grants that I think were awarded, um, two or three years ago. And they've been doing a ton of work, which I think people know about, um, i- in the, in the South Central area. So Cordova, Chigniga, uh, Jeremiah mentioned, Pelican, Yakitap, Portray, and then Wallack. They're putting down seven hundred miles of subsea cable, cable. And I'm gonna say this out loud, but it still blows my mind. You can say that ninety percent of the state's internet traffic is going to be going through their system. So they're, yeah, they're doing a ton of work and, and setting up this network for South Central Alaska that's handling the majority of, um, internet traffic for the state, and they're, and the whole, a, a, a lot of other areas to build in redundancy and backup in case something goes awry. So. Imagine Councilmember Hanson is familiar with that. Um, but again, housing came up even in that conversation because of the need, you know, we got, people are saying, oh, you're gonna have all this great internet service, and we can have remote workers, but we need housing. For those folks and that. Yeah, and we heard in the city about the water and sewer loots. There was some mention too that Valdez is bringing in a barge for scrap metal, and that we might build a piggyback on some of that on one of those trips. And they, well, they might link two or three trips, so maybe we can, to the price right, be part of that, yeah. Great, stay open. Um, we did talk a little bit, um, there were two groups, maybe either Nelsa Benjulista and Sheldon Barnes, and we talked a little bit about Shepherd Point, and it sounds like, I, what? We've registered before, but they have not decided or clarified about road access and whether it's gonna be public. It's what I was hearing, and, uh, and whether or not Shepherd Point would be a tribal road, and it's not gonna have any tolls, um, along, so that's still being discussed, it sounds like. Yeah, so those are some of the things that came up tonight.
We were talking about that, um, tribal education program, that's what they brought.
Yeah, if you'd like to add anything to it, you're gonna have?
No, that's perfect. Yes, perfect. I've got a question going back to the University of Alaska land.
Oh, yeah.
And the, um, and that's to see additional one million dollars as you go on towards the development of that land, you know? What, one point six?
Yeah, I told you, two point six.
So, total two point six, so a lot of money, but could, could go quickly. Was there any discussion you had about if there are any overruns for that might come from, as a, as a creep out? Seems like a lot, or, or do you study, uh, prior to?
Yeah, that was good.
Any questions, or?
Thank you.
All right, so I'm seeing that, which we've worked.
Okay, I have a couple of things, and then we have to, we want to talk further. Um, so I did meet with Robbie Mattson, we can talk about the Road Two Twenty. Um, they are paying attention, they're looking at it, it is three quarters of, so away from the highway, and they're right away. But they are monitoring, they have, um, cohorts past the road, and they will continue to monitor and, um, move when the highway comes, gets closer to understanding what that, if that's gonna turn the other way or stay. So they are on it, they do understand it's happening, um, that is, EA Corporation and Orange Circle Sneeze.
Yeah.
That is currently, um, the grade. Over it. Um, so they are aware of it. Um, also, for everyone, the city of Cordova's twenty twenty-five local hazard mitigation plan is on the city webpage. There's a for public comment, it would be great if we could get some public comment, it's right on the front page. Um, I said, my deadline, but I remember, my deadline for?
Monday, Monday.
In the name of day.
Okay.
Um, also, some cheering news, DMV will be opening soon. Spencer is doing an amazing job, he's moving through training, he has completed one module. Um, they're still working out details, but it's, it's moving. It is not an easy process. And then, uh, Cheryl?
Do you think that DMV might be opening first of the year?
Oh, yeah.
December?
I'd say ninety percent chance, yes. Maybe, I mean.
But not open with all functions?
No, right, so the way the DMV works, it's like you get to learn how to give out licenses and realigning and that stuff, and then you have to do that, and then you have to take a test, and then you pass, you get to learn something else. So it's not like full-on. So it works through a process, and we will, um, give some information about, like, what that will look like, the ten minutes.
So my question then would be, are real license codes gonna be available in December? Possibly?
Possibly. I knew somebody would ask me. The tired media working, you never know.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for letting me back up here, I just wanted to, now follow up after Jim's audit presentation. It's been a pleasure to work with you, not involved with, and I've learned a lot. Um, I do really appreciate that you're back in the areas that we can focus on improving on. Um, I did wanna give a shout out to the finance staff. Some of, well, finance staff is fifty percent new, two of us are new, including myself. And two of them are pretty well-versed in their duties and their experience within the cell. So, um, you can see where the targeted focus is for training. But, um, in addition to that, they did take up the slack as I left them, um, with no notice, the night before audit started. Um, I took a trip and had my own statement, so, very impromptu, I really appreciate all the work that they did. Um, there was some things that I was prepared to be able to do, and they filled in the gap for that. So there was a learning curve that happened onsite, and unfortunately, the auditors got to experience that. But really, they came through in a crush, so I think it's great. Um, I won't do that again. I'm pretty sure that doesn't happen, and I'll be there, yeah, I'm ready. Um, also, I wanted to touch on that previously, we spent a good portion of time talking about the fund balance, the ending fund balance for the year, two thousand twenty-three, we ended with a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. I'm not sure if anyone noticed, in two thousand twenty-four, we ended at two, just over two point three million. Um, this shows the efforts that both council and administration have been taking to increase the city's financial health. Um, and it's a big undertaking. While that number is a significant improvement from the two thousand twenty-three level, I think it's really important, especially during budget development, to keep in mind that we need to continue these efforts for fiscal recovery. In two thousand twenty-two, that ending fund balance was over three point two million. So that's nine hundred seventy thousand, roughly higher than what we saw from this past year. Based on what we know so far in two thousand twenty-five, which I know I sign on broken record, we had, we discussed these items so, so much, but I think it's worth mentioning again, um, that we had the budget amendments that we already, um, processed for two thousand twenty-five, which was a hundred and twenty thousand for mortgage, and then the overall change with, um, secure rules schools and the school bond rein, bond reimbursement, debt reimbursement, authority lowering, um, and then after that, with our final numbers from third quarter or final, I mean, things can still come in, but majority of it has come in, and our sales tax is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars lower than what we budgeted in two thousand twenty-five. Along with fish tax being three hundred and sixty thousand lower, we know that we've taken a one point five million hit in, in two thousand twenty-five. So all that to say that to rebuild again in twenty-six, even though it looks good at the end of that audit, we know we're gonna take a step back. Our efforts have to begin now to rebuild, um, with, and specifically with the current work that we're undertaking with the budget process. Um, I think the best path forward to overcoming our financial shortfalls is for the city to work collectively toward responsible and sustainable budgeting. I will continue to say that, we have to make sure this is something that we can sustain. Um, and living within our means, and our, as the council say that many times to you, I really appreciate that, that take on it. Yeah. Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Uh, clerk's reports? I'm okay, we've got a lot of things coming.
For the off party for after.
We have some staff reports, um, uh, sort of historical museum and put up a book library, do you wanna?
Hi, so, um, Asha Devon, uh, the director of the museum library. Um, so this report went over the end of the summer, um, finishing up with several fun exhibits in the museum and the final results of our summer reading program. Uh, and then also the start of the fall programs, getting back into after-school art, um, advanced after-school art, and a few other programs, um, like Firefly, Fireside Reading Club, Diamond Reading Club, and so on, time. Um, and so museums, library went strong with the programs, um, everyone seems to be enjoying them. Um, and we're building a new base of, uh, new Cordovans that are coming into the library and experiencing the program for the first time. So it's been a really fun, exciting year. Is there any questions about this specific thing?
I just wanna say thank you for the programming, because it seems like, I mean, I think when we think of libraries, we think of books, and people enter, checking our books and putting that on the shelf, but these programs are incredible, you're doing so much more than that. And I think, um, I mean, I hear only totally that, you know, the schools, uh, close early on Fridays, and a lot of kids come to the library, it's, you know, it's a place for kids to be around, because that's parents are working, and they can't, they don't, they won't go home anyway, and it's just a fun place to be. So I think, um, we're working on doing something. Actually, really terrific.
Um, I would like to invite you all to come to the sobriety thirtieth, uh, celebration tomorrow. We are having small photo exhibit, uh, uh, conjunction with NDE, um, another history sobriety, um, photo show, so till we find it open at five tomorrow.
Thanks, Ash.
With really good snacks.
With really good snacks.
Okay.
Uh, that we're not providing, and their, their staff is providing, so it'll be fun.
It's always an enticement.
It is.
Snacks.
Okay. So are we gonna hear from the reports? No. Okay, oh, so we've got the, we've got the written report in there, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Um, we'll there, any comments anybody wants to make about that?
Well, that's interesting, AI is a problem everywhere. I, that's my offering to the board. Yeah.
Nice, yeah, I, I will, either concern on that, because there is some talk about AI being a bubble, and I don't know how much, I mean, there's clearly a lot of emphasis on the report on it, and I would not want us to get too heavy in that, but, yeah, thought about it.
We can certainly ask, we can come and tell.
Yeah.
Maybe after the first meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so correspondence. There are lots of pieces of correspondence, three topics, it's like, hey. Comments down there? Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Now that moves us to ordinance one, two, three, five, I entertain that motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance one, two, three, five, authorizing the city manager to transfer funds from the permanent fund for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-six Peterbilt two-five-twenty dumpster truck.
I'll say.
Been moved and seconded, Adam, you said, and Zastron, so pass him over, Adams, do you wanna speak to your motion?
I just wanna open it, you put it on the table here, for discussion, okay? It's members' address.
Yeah, we discussed it that, anyway, uh, last meeting, it's the, um, seems like the appropriate thing to do, we need it, uh, we can't keep borrowing from other cities, so, yeah. Keep the board on.
Other comments, anyone online?
Yep, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll be in favor of supporting this, but I would like to see this with at least the three percent that they show in the amortization. Uh, I, I've, I don't know, if we, if we had to go somewhere else, I know we had when, uh, uh, city manager Howarth was in, she was trying to get creative and find these different leasing companies, and they all cost money. And I even proposed during that time, why aren't we borrowing from ourselves and paying ourself interest versus an outside entity? Why, let's, this is a way for us to have some growth, um, within our own general permanent fund, I know it has different names, um, and so that's, that's where I'd see this, the, the enterprise fund needs to be able to be somewhat self-sufficient, and I understand that they may not have liquidity to cover, you know, nearly a four hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. But what this does sets up a cycle, is this and the hoop truck, at some point, those get paid off. That's now built into their budget, they've created a fee schedule around that. As that money gets freed up, we can then, there might be another thing that they need to borrow money for, and it's very likely we have aging infrastructure. If not, then that creates a built-in mechanism in which they can start putting money aside for that next thing. Uh, the whatever that thing is that needs to, um, I guess, be purchased. So that's my two cents on this.
Thank you.
I, I would echo, um, those last comments there, I, I think, you know, uh, as, as we've heard from at least one member of the public today, these enterprise funds need to be self-supporting. And when they borrow money from us, we, we should be getting some return on, with, in the form of interest, so that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Sure, I was just going to say the same things that have just been previously mentioned, so I think it was a a good reminder that the enterprise funds are supposed to pay for themselves, so it is a low-interest loan.
Yeah, so the, uh, ordinance is written with a provision for, um, payback by the refuse division to the permanent fund at a three percent interest rate and making seven annual payments. So I am not permitting the limitations to the ordinance as proposed, so that will stand? Or is the part of the provision now? Okay. We have no further comments, let's have a roll call, okay? And this is moving on from the permanent fund requires seven, yes, votes. Uh, Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Deborah Adams?
Yes.
Dave Zastron?
Yes.
Mike Mickelson?
Yes.
Aaron Hansen?
Yeah.
Whitey Rayne?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero, sorry, Madam Mayor, you don't get to vote. That's your chance. Okay, all right, that's even fun. Uh, ordinance, so we'll move on to ordinance one, two, three, six. I will, Jay Morton?
Mayor Smith, yes. I move to adopt ordinance twelve thirty-six. An ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for Dova Electric Cooperative Incorporated for an approximately two point one four acre
For an approximately 2.14 acre portion of ATS two twenty.
I'll second that.
Thank you, it's moved, um, Sherman and seconded Kinsman, so council member Sherman.
Um, yeah, we've discussed this at length and, um. This has been on the table for a really long time, so it's an appropriate, I feel, it's an appropriate, um. Sale agreement to complete. Benefiting both the city and our electric power group.
Council member Kinsman?
Yep, I agree with, uh, I think done a really good job negotiating this, the price is. Very fair, especially considering the risks that the CDC is taking on. Um, uh, what I would like to know and see from staff, and this can come at a later time if that's obviously needed, I know in the budget, middle of budget cycle. What are we doing with this money? That's what I wanna know, and I want the public to know, what are we doing with? And where is it gonna be allocated to, because I understand now our code isn't written as such that it has to go into the permanent fund. But I, I want to see that come before us, so, thank you.
Further comments?
Yes, yes, and it was very clearly, uh, explained that. Why this is a valuable decision to help the city and for CDC, and not Lisa, which, uh, um. I may declare the getting grant, I have to do additional work on, it's hard to be without ownership. Right, reasons why this is the right thing to do.
Okay. Um, last call? Any comments? Uh, so, all right, um. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you oppose, same sign?
Mary Smith's face, I forgot to vote aye. So are you sending the two on the phone here? And if they were very quiet.
I said aye in favor, sorry, I didn't come on.
Am I able to deny from you as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution one, one dash two, five dash two, seven. That a motion? Yes, I agree. I approve, uh, I move to approve resolution eleven dash twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the city council of Cordova, Alaska. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a sole source contract with sole treatment technologies for the disposal of contaminated. I'll second. Been moved, Rainy and seconded Adams, so council member Rainy.
Uh, I know we are working to do this in conjunction with the local business and I'd like to see, to do whatever we can do to benefit both entities. Getting rid of her soil, getting rid of our soil.
Aye, and it's a good move there, just get it going. Um, council member Adams?
I would agree, I think time's right, and this is an opportunity to, to benefit both parties, the city and the local business that hasn't. Really put their neck out to, um, to be able to continue to do business here.
Any, um, further comments?
I just appreciate the work staff has done to describe all of the reasons why this is a little more urgent right now, we could take it back for another. Um, entity in town that leads to disposal theirs, the cost, take over two years, their EPC, their apartments. Yeah, this seems like the right time to do it, we gotta do it eventually, it's like the right time to do it.
Comments to scale out of that? Murder ship. Uh, any comments from folks online?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm Kinsman, um, I would be in support of this, and I know there's still some variables on, uh, the actual cost that this will be, and I'm sure that will come before us, it looks like. Once we know what that is, I am also in favor of this being, I, I thought it was prudent that public had something to say on this. Because this is where my thought was going, of this being a loan, I could be in favor with, given the circumstances of this, without interest. But at least some kind of payback, uh, from an enterprise fund and, uh, related to this incident and remediation, so. Um, so that's, I, we need to do it now, as obviously I appreciate staff and, and, uh. Really painting a very clear picture why we need to do it now, so it's great and appropriate and. Look forward to having further conversation once we know what the final cost is.
I would echo, uh, councilman Kinsman's comments there, I, I definitely think that we should be charging interest, but, but I, I understand time is of the essence and, um. You know, w- we need to get this done, so, thank you.
But this is just to authorize this whole source contract, right, we'll have another. Vote when we have to, record or?
No.
Not at all, okay.
And just not to exceed.
Okay.
Hundred and ten. So hopefully it'll be less.
Right.
Anticipated to be less than that, yeah. And then, yes, those we find on a prize, I will let you all know, and we can have a discussion about.
Yeah, that's nice. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of resolution eleven dash two, five, dash two, seven. Authorizing city manager to enter into a sole source contract for disposal of contaminated soil, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? So you're misleading this business. We are at. Council action on disposal and method of disposal for lot two, block seven, Northville Development Park.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to dispose of lot two, block seven, Northville Development Park, approximately 11,534 square feet in size. As outlined in Cordova Municipal Code seven point four, zero point zero six zero B five. Request sealed proposals to lease or purchase the property.
Okay. Sherman and seconded, Randy Zastro.
Randy Zastro.
I think it was DC. Just like DC, yeah.
Um, council member Sherman.
Okay. Let me find in my notes, um. So, um, first of all, I would thank planning and zoning for all the work they have done on this. People do not listen to the planning and zoning meetings or attend them, they really should, um, it's a. A hardworking commission, a lot of words and a whole lot, and I thank them for that. So this lease has just concluded recently, is that correct?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be done in November, April.
Right, okay, so, um, my suggestion for an RFP is to consider. Councilman Baylor is on my shoulders telling us to be consistent, um, so we should do this as an RFP to the public. The two applicants, I think, to be honest. Are in the know about this lot, and I would like to see if there's other, um, interest in the lot as well, so I would like to say glad this is our.
Members Astro.
And yeah, I agree with everything that comes from the show, and this said, and, um, again, also all the work they're planning during, and I think they're correct in saying it has just come up available. Had new available, going out recently, so it's good to give the opportunity to all the committee to put in a proposal, um, for lease or purchase.
Other comments?
So, one little clarification, lease, not to own, lease with purchase. Or straight up purchase. Lease with purchase?
We're gonna have all three.
No.
Lease or purchase, probably both.
In code, it says lease to lease or purchase, why we have to clarify. So we know how to write the RFP.
We've developed this lease with option to purchase, okay. The thing, so I just wanna make sure that there's also the ability to just purchase.
We should change the wording to credit.
Well, I think that the code leaves it that way, because sometimes the council may determine that a property is only suitable for lease. Or that there's no reason to lease it because we think, let's just sell this off and that's it, so leave you latitude to go either way, but staff needs clear direction, so when we form an RFP. Are we giving the public the option to lease the property or purchase the property? Or just one or the other, because it drastically affects how the RFP is, uh, presented to the public. So just from this decision and all land decisions going forward, it just would help us if it's very clear, do you want to consider both, or do you only wanna consider one or the other? Purchase automatically means that it could be a lease with option to purchase, it's up to the council at a later time to determine, do they wanna do a direct sale? Or a lease with option to purchase, um, decision, so, that's helpful, yeah. Use or purchase.
Well, the motion was lease or purchase, and so only change it if anybody wants to change it to purchase only or lease home.
Okay.
Because we had to review one not too long ago, because. We have to allow for the lease option.
And not lease option, but the option to lease.
Okay. And this one will be lease or, or purchase.
Correct.
Do, Madam Mayor, do we have a date? This, that staff, determined staff, the date for?
Oh, when our P could be.
No, we don't have to write it and, and get it out, but once it goes out, we could, I'll be, we'll debate when they'll be, you know, required to determine then.
So it'll take a few weeks to issue your RFP or one week.
I would imagine.
And that's usually a thirty day.
It's always thirty days.
Thirty day application process? Right.
Yeah, I think, sorry, you have to put on that, right.
Yeah. Uh, so the motion on the table is to dispose of lot two, block seven, Northville Development Park by requesting sealed proposals to lease or purchase the property. Any further comments, anyone online? Okay, you're in, no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Great. Okay, so now we're going to go to council action on disposal. Method of disposal of lots one, two, block five, Odeak Park subdivision.
Mayor, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to dispose of lots one and two, block five, Odeak Park subdivision, approximately forty-five thousand five hundred thirteen square feet in size, as outlined in Cordova Municipal Code. Seven point four, zero point zero six zero B by request sealed proposal, RFPs to lease or purchase the effort center.
Leaked by council member Rainy, it's seconded by Rashad, so council member Rainy, this is for you, Tom. That's all I got, that's it.
I remember sure. So, um, yeah, this is from Mr. Baylor, but this lot has also been available for a very long time, which. Planning and zoning agreed as well, they amended their motion, um. Let's see, make sure I don't write one here, um, but it does involve an unanimous stream, didn't I say that already, unanimous, unanimous, um. And proposers, I, I'm excited, they've, these lot are of interest, they, they provided very little detail, what would be voted there. So I would agree that I'd like to see sealed proposals, um, and that, of course, is a little bit more detail.
Okay. Other comments? Anybody online? Okay. Um. You're in, no further discussion, all those in favor of disclosing the lots one and two, block five, Odeak Park subdivision. By requesting sealed proposals to lease or purchase the property? Right, you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Keep passless. Okay, so now we're going to. Um, council action on disposal and method of disposal for portion of lots eleven through fourteen, block thirty-two, original town site.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move to dispose of a portion of lots, uh, eleven through fourteen, block thirty-two, original town site, approximately seventeen thousand nine hundred and eight square feet. In size, as outlined in Cordova Municipal Code, seven point four, zero point zero six zero. B by request for sealed proposal, RFPs to lease or purchase the property.
I'll second, sealed.
Sealed proposals.
Okay. Uh, and, and so move Zastro and something that's written, that's members Astro.
Mayor Baylor as well, I mean, and frankly, what we're talking about here is, um, uh. When we have people coming forward interested in, um, uh, land, is given the opportunity to enter community, that might be interested, who could have a proposal, so. That's what we're talking about, and, uh, yeah, just try and be consistent here.
Council member Mayor.
Um. Excellent. Uh, any other comments?
Yes, thank you very much, so, um. This is where we're gonna press, Tom. So if you listened to planning and zoning's discussion about this, these lots have been available for a extremely long time, because they're original city blocks, um. And it's very awkward fighting with those lots, um. And there's gonna be a lot involved to develop them, um, and there's gonna be little corners and pieces that are gonna. Really screw up the whole fighting of it, um, so it's gonna be a complicated. Piece to build on, and it's gonna involve the builders. Going through a lot of hoops with the planner and with the city, so. In this case, planning and zoning felt like negotiating with the builders. Who have experience in our community. And picked a place that has been available for a long time. But has a lot of complicated pieces to it, um, they felt. Rather than scare the builder off, that it might be worthy of just negotiating directly with them, rather than doing the RFP proposal. So, well, I know we're trying to be consistent. And it's supportive, what planning and zoning recommended on this one.
We should, is there an amendment to the motion?
I would propose an amendment, I don't know if it will be accepted, but I would propose. Wait, I need to. I would propose that we follow. Planning and zoning's recommendation, which is to negotiate an agreement with the party who submitted a letter of interest to lease or purchase the property, David Paddock and David Evans.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion. To change the method of disposal from requesting sealed proposals to negotiating an agreement with the party who submitted the letter of interest. Um, is there discussion on the amendment?
All right, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I guess, again, I feel pretty strong on consistency, I think, too, this, um, firstly, the folks are interested in a lot, I don't see how this is necessarily scared of a lot. We've seen that any work that they do. And a proposal would be used as part of their purchase as well, this is the work they would probably like to think to me just do, and of course, of preparing to develop this lot. So, I don't know, um, I guess I'm not sure about scaring them off.
Uh, may I speak to the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. So, again, in the argument from PMZ, and I'm gonna refer to them, but this is for residential housing. One family, two families, three family dwellings, you know. Um. This is housing that we've been talking about and pushing for. And why not move forward a little faster?
Councilmember Kinsman, did you want to speak to your second?
Yes, uh, councilmember Sherman, thank you for bringing this forward. Um, and this was exactly where I was going with this. This is a perfect example of of, uh, common sense, a make sense approach to housing and really leaning into our commissions. We, they're there for a reason. And and we get to as a council decide how we take the commission's approach and their recommendations. But I think this is perfect. This is, uh, a lot, lots, I should say, lots that have been available for a really long time. They're nuanced. It's gonna require, I mean, we're looking at, I'm, would be impressed if this is all done within a year, even if we go direct negotiation with them. Um, this is an uphill battle to get all of this. Uh, and we're not, and we're gonna see it again. We'll probably see it a couple of times. Because that's how nuanced this lot is. So I, I want to say, hey, if there's someone out there who wants to take a really funky lot and do something to benefit our community. As a member of the council, I will support that.
Um, I respectfully disagree. And believe we need to hold to the process. I think it doesn't matter how long it's been available. I think it's well taken, the comments from PMZ, I do listen to the PMZ meetings. I appreciate all of their information. They also understand that the council usually goes to RFP with their recommendation. I've heard that mentioned more than once, but I feel like. Our job, part of our job is to be consistent and so people know what to expect and I don't think. Going to an RFP is gonna scare them off if they're that invested in it and I think we need to just be consistent.
Thank you. Other comments about the amendments? Okay, why, just because there's folks online and people here, could we just a vocal on the amendment?
Yes.
Um, so on, on whether the original motion should be amended from request for sealed proposals to negotiating agreement. Quick call.
Jennifer Adams. No. Aaron Hansen.
No.
Casey Kinsman. Casey, Casey. You're muted now.
Yes.
Yes. Mike Nicholson.
No.
Dave Astro.
No.
Wendy Rainey.
No.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
The amendment fails.
Good luck. Okay, well, thanks. I mean, I think that's the point of this process is to tease all that out. So thank you for. Raising that and having that conversation. Um, is there any further discussion on the main motion?
Just, um, happy to see that somebody wants to literally have an uphill building project. And, um, we've talked about the need for housing. Um, and these, um, builders have already shown their, um, success in other projects in the community.
Uh, I, I think I'd like to pile on here and say, you know, I'm really happy to see this proposal. I just wanna be consistent with how we're handling these things. I, I do recognize that the Planning and Zoning Commission made the recommendation, but I, I think, you know. Our, our job as, as, um, city council members is, is to represent the best interests and while I agree that we have a housing shortage. Um, I don't believe this is overly burdensome or asking too much of these folks and I would hope that they would still be, continue to be interested. Given that we are following the same procedure as we have everybody else go through. So, thanks.
Mayor. Mayor. Councilmember Anderson.
I, I would also. Say that I really do not wanna make it anymore to vote for anybody who lost investment and bill, but. At the same time, not have any special treatment or viewing. Just having it even introverted that way. Continue the consistency. This is how we would like to see it done and to ensure that this is, you know, what we would like to see. And so although I really wanted to. Vote yes. I'm glad that we are moving in a consistent manner so that everybody feels that they're getting some treatment.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Kathy. My shoulders are big enough to take on this.
I just like to have everybody recognize that this, uh, person who wants to do this property has a great plan. Well, I think that's, that's very well appreciated if I ever. Hopefully they will, they move forward.
Additional comment? All right, uh, all those in favor of the main motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, so we're coming to, um. Last, I have a council action on disposal, a method of disposal for a portion of lot one block seven eight tidewater development park.
Not Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Ray.
I move to approve the proposal from Camp Two's Alaska Wild Seafoots to purchase a portion of lot one block seven eight tidewater development park.
Second, moved and seconded. Um, councilmember Ray.
I looked at this proposal. It does have the best of both worlds. It gives an option for the public space that we, uh, hear the public wants. And it helps to move forward with a local business in the spirit of a commercial fishing community. As loud as people are about a parking lot, I think if you stand on the parking lot and turn around and look behind you. You get that beautiful view that everybody wants so badly. Um, there are a lot of, there is a lot of beauty around this place. Um, and a ground parking lot at the entrance through the harbor is not the first place I take tourists when they come to Cordova. So I think in the spirit of everything, their proposal did show a walking path and benches and, uh, picnic table allowance there. Uh, so we can still have the best of both worlds, but I think it's time that we support this local business. And I think that this is a good compromise for both.
I share Councilman Ray's, uh, sentiment sentiments as well. And as was stated earlier in, um, audience comments. Um, in the meeting that, you know, that we are a fishing community and fishing is the lifeblood. Of our economy and we need to support any business that wants to grow our fishing industry. And, um, and I, what I like about this proposal is that it is sensitive to the other voices in the community. As best as we can manage it. And we live literally in a national park. Um, there are spaces for people to recreate. Um, and we need spaces for businesses to function as well. And Camp Two has tried numerous ways, um, this, well, this business, um, has tried numerous ways to, um, to grow their business and have come before the council many times. And I think times right now to give them the go.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, other comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson and then Sherman.
Um, it really does. It checks the boxes. It, it. Is there for the community that will support fishermen? Um, what I would also add. Is, you know, there's all these ideas for new infrastructure and covered spaces. You know, the old science center is right there. And it's kind of the same. You know, feel right there at the entrance. It's got utilities. People wanna put a bunch of time and effort into creating something that could be a viable resource. Um, I mean, we already proved that we struggle maintaining the current infrastructure that is in Cordova. The building in the harbor, you know, created more parking. There was always talk about a cover space right there at the beginning of the breakwater trail. Maybe getting into some of the areas that need help to create development. Or to develop, to create these things that we want would be a better solution than purveying. Somebody who wants to, you know, invest. In literally one of the best places to achieve or any to achieve. So. Byron.
Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah, um, I had a couple of questions, I guess, maybe for the planners, if the manager would allow her to come forward. It's me. Um, so a couple of things I would, and I just question about, does their plan provide, um, first of clarification? The great purpose of purchase, is there a discussion period between you and the proposers? That can morph the proposal a little in a compromised fashion or not?
Yeah, well, so there will be negotiation.
Okay, I guess that's what I was, okay, thanks. And, um, so a couple of the concerns that I, I still have, but I love the proposal and I think. It shows the determination of a local business. Who, you know, has definitely proved their work in our community over the years and, um, I really love the fact that they paid attention to the community. Um, voices about this lot and, um. When the city built this lot. It was very expensive and very controversial and it was always supposed to be sold. To make back the money that we had to spend on it. And to become an economic driver. I love the fact that maybe we could do both now on this space because it's become the love to buy the community. Probably hard fishing community. Um, so I really appreciate that. I had just had a couple of concerns and, um. Again, I think this was all brought up by PMZ too, access to the coast guard light, just to make sure that that can be maintained. There was, uh. Yeah, parking, I love the idea that they might expand and make that two ways for congestion purposes. Little concerned, but keep looking at this and I see it setback. Everybody comes speeding, well, I don't vote on it anymore, but everybody comes speeding into that breakwater. And I worry about their little building or offloading place and congestion there, but hopefully that would be okay. There was some discussion, uh, I think from planning and zoning about. Building in that that perpetually remains a green space for our community.
So, uh, that portion, they weren't asking to purchase it, that would mean the city would maintain that.
And is it possible to, I don't know what the process is, to. Make it become a literal green space for eternity or perpetuity?
Zone it as a park.
Well, it's a little more complicated than that. We did talk about this before on those lots of chase. We would have to look into that. It's, it's. There's a lot of nuances to that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we own it. And if, you know, we can look into what those are and we will.
And I'm not saying that that needs to be a condition. I was just curious about that process. How you would ever guarantee something like that for no, but, yeah, councils on the road. And then, um, there were some other great ideas that planning and zoning, I thought, um. Because people have been concerned that it might not. Be aesthetic enough, but they talked about the old fencing that's on the science center that has the fish cutouts on it. You know, why not use that for the fencing on that area? We own that too. We could take that down and use that. But anyway, I'm just, I'm getting beyond myself, but the community was made very well aware. There were a lot of people at PMZ testifying about this. That the city has no money to maintain any little green spaces we create right now. There's, there's no money. And so there were a lot of great ideas put out there and it was made very clear that if this is gonna happen. If the community wants to help Camp Two develop and then share in green space is the community's effort that's gonna have to happen. It can't be necessarily based on the city because. We don't have the money to do that. As we all know. So I'm in favor of it. I just had a couple of those questions. Um, I, I think it would be exciting to see it be developed. And I love the compromise idea.
I would echo the comments of everybody that's spoken so far. I, I think this is the very definition of compromise. I think what this also does is right now there's a lot of congestion within the harbor, um, when boats are delivered. Um, because there's, there's a huge lineup of boats sometimes, especially after the first couple of openers. And this allows them to get out of the harbor and, um, it just makes operations safer and more efficient. From, from the fishing industry perspective, I, I definitely think we need to support this, this business. This is a reasonable plan. I, I think there's definitely a way to do this where, you know, it, it just starts off as, it's like. Uh, as, as their drawing in their proposal kind of indicates where it's, this is the, the portion that's available for the public to use. Um, and this is the portion for, for processing and I don't know that we necessarily need to put any money into it right away. Um, we, we certainly could in the future, but, um, I, I think it's really critical to, uh. Make sure that they have real access and, and could have a fish pump, so. I, I, I'm, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Zastro.
Yeah, we've been dealing with this for a long time. Camp Two's been trying to find a home for a long time. I feel like it's important for all of this. It's kind of late and we've been discussing this for a long time. I agree with everything my, of the councilmembers have said so far. And I feel that it is a reasonable compromise. I know for me that that's what I was hoping for when we went back out for request for proposals. Uh, we wanted whatever the proposals are coming back to be something that was a compromise to allow the benefits of the public, public. Come to enjoy it for that view and that, that sense of setting up their free receiving when they come back. Feels like that, that's a compliment I think we can hear. And all the other reasons that is important to Camp Two, um, in their operation, so. I'm happy to hear that we're, we're looking into the, uh, councilmember Sherman's question was a question I had. The space that would be retained by the city once, uh, it's re-plant it. Exactly, what would that be, um? Um, managed as, right? It was managed right now to be very much an industrial area, but, um. What would that look like? Is it green space, part of parks and rec? Um, and as far as infrastructure, that can come later, but I would definitely like to run that down to be sure that this is going to be. A space for people, you know, probably in their, in their community. So, thank you.
Online, councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, no, I think this is a good compromise. Hopefully the community can come together and see this as. A win-win instead of a lose-lose, but I, you know, people will see what they're gonna see. I think it's important to note that even this public space, it's, it's gonna be determined, public city boundary area. There are improvements that Camp Two is wanting to do to those spaces and, and that's of a value to our community as well. Um, and I think, I think it's a very thoughtful design. Um, and I mean, like I said, I've been a pretty vocal proponent of this and supporting Camp Two. And recognizing the work and effort she does in our community and here is just like the epitome and antithesis and of just like. Resilience of we've, as a community, and not just necessarily council, but as a community have thrown so many obstacles at this business. And they are so determined to thrive and they are thriving. And I think that's a great message that we as council can send and hopefully as a community as a whole can recognize that. We are a fishing community. And we want this and other, other businesses, you know, this is just one example of a business who wants to be successful when. Especially in, in the environment where other businesses are maybe pulling away from Cordova. Here's an example of a business that wants to just expand and thrive in our community. So, thank you, Camp Two, for this very thoughtful. So, thank you, Cam two, for this very thoughtful uh, proposal and I'll support it.
Is there further? Do you want a second round, have additional comments to make?
One point here is that I also really appreciate the care and the effort in this entire proposal. There's a lot of homework there. This wasn't just thrown together. And so it shows, it's another demonstration of Cam two's commitment. And I, you know, in a time when we have a lot of dissension about. Immigrants in this country and the last sentence in their proposal is. The operation still remains family-owned, our story represents a significant example of achieving the American dream. And I'm gonna tear up all of that. Cause I remember when Cam two first came to Cordova. And. I wanna honor them.
I'm, I'm going to, okay, I do wanna say, I do understand the other side having the space open for the recreation opportunities. But I do wanna remind people, we have um, a project that is planned for the South Harbor, a covered space, recreation area. That has trail, that trail as a matter of fact, through the trails committee is gonna be extended all the way out to the very end of Breakwater. But all that's contiguous and that's the thing that I've always worked on as a recreation person. My, my day job is trying to consolidate recreation opportunities at the same location. If you put all those in one location, it costs a way down, people can have a variety of activities once, one space. People that aren't as aggressive on hiking and walking, they can hang out picnic table, their kids can go out on the trail. Those are the things you look for in a recreation opportunity and it's still providing that amazing view, it's a different view, but it's an amazing view. And we still get this amazing view. So I, it's just an all-around, then when we got such an amazing opportunity in our harbor to still have a recreation. And have the opportunity to continue to do commercial fishing the way it can be too.
Madam Mayor? Just one final comment on this for any, any public out there. If you have, if you have any questions or concerns or you feel like you're in maybe the lose-lose category. Instead of the win-win category, please, please, please read this proposal through its entirety. It's very, very well thought out. That's, that's my biggest just advocacy for the community, for the public at large. If, please, instead of just considering this a lose, read through th- this in its entirety. Thank you.
That's all? Any questions? All right, uh, all those in favor, um. Um, in favor of the motion to. Approve the proposal from Cam two's Alaska Wild Sea Boots to purchase a portion of lot one block seven eight Tyborne Development Park. Okay, on the motion, Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Aaron Hansen.
Yes.
Mike Michelson.
Yes.
Dave Astro.
Yes.
Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Deborah Adams.
Yes.
Wendy Ray.
Yes.
That brings us to ending agenda and our. To do this.
Other stuff.
All that other stuff, yes, which I would like to start off by asking, will we can. Meet number eleven in section A and number two in section B. My page upside down, wait a minute. Just to skinny the list a little bit. Number one was in section. Two and B. What did you say? We didn't think you said C, yes. Uh, number eleven in section eight and number two in session. Two and B. And uh, one of the things I was going to say is that next week we do have a planned. Uh, budget work session, read this in general fund. And if you read the memo, the manager might. Want to discuss a few things with you because you could put such a packet out in executive session. So um. And if you see under executive session on our agenda, time and item might lend itself to an executive session. You can have. Madam Mayor? Well, but you, I think, can you do it during the, when we get to the executive session part? Okay?
Yeah.
All right. I wrote a note about Blake after January first, so maybe I'll add that we'll have an update on the permanent fund, on our investment. Stuff sometime in January.
Look, Susan, on that, now what we have under A.
Yeah.
Number eight strategic review, we can do this on a regular basis and Blake, I think that could be removed.
Sure, sure, I, I have heard it because he brought up that specifically umbrella thing, but, okay, let's take that out. And then. I'm writing down, maybe I'll put him on as a regular to revisit.
Yeah, me, it should be like under C, just we do this with him quickly, done, done.
Other pending items?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is there, and this is purely just for me, because I'm traveling for work. Is there an opportunity to move our meeting, our work session next week to Thursday? And we'll be fine if it doesn't work, I get it, I'm just putting a plug out there. I will be traveling that night, that won't be available.
How do people feel about meeting on the thirteenth instead of the top?
I, I'm gonna be traveling that evening of the, the Thursday.
Okay, well.
I'm okay with that.
Well, to accommodate one or the other, it's, it's fine, oh. Believe it as is, that's fine. And I will try to work around that myself, so.
I should say that I will be open to attendance that night, but I will be in English on twelve. Tuesday this one, or Wednesday this one, Wednesday the twelfth, yeah. Aaron, you can't make it, you won't. You can't make Thursday, but you can make Wednesday the twelfth.
So the twelfth, the, the.
Madam Mayor, would you be running the meeting or would? No, not if he's not here, actually, it's gonna be somebody in the room. Right, so Casey, you'll be on, on Zoom also?
No, he won't.
Oh, he won't be available at all?
I won't, if I am available, it will be by Zoom, I will not be in person.
Okay, Kathy, you're next, you're, you're here.
It's just a word, so.
Chair, yeah, sure. And Aaron will be here for more support.
Of course.
You can pass the gap. Of course, we're booting harbor, looks like.
Yeah, he knows, I talked to him, he knows.
Do they, Wednesday, that's what, that's it, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Oh, a- actually, I, I am available Thursday, I'm not available Wednesday, so that would work better for me, sorry about that.
And I, I can't do Thursday. Anybody else can't do Thursdays? But now we have two, that can only do Thursday, what else is going on Thursday? Thank you. Aaron's almost like, yeah, you gotta do it Thursday. Who will be more support? My wife will not be again.
Thursday should be fine, move it.
Okay, yeah, which means we only lose one person. I know, over two, so we're gonna go with Thursday, is that okay with us?
That sounds good.
Thank you, I will, I will still be attending by Zoom, or I will actually be able to attend by Zoom if we do Thursday. I still won't be in person.
Thursday, the third. Because then you won't be in person. I'm allowing you for some of my role in the tent. And Kathy, prepare. We're prepared, you can walk down home. All right, anybody else for beginning agenda? Okay, audience participation. Anybody wanna drop a comment?
Hi, my name is Trent Dylan, um, um, one forty Pennsylvania Marina Road. We would just like to thank everyone that has been in support of our uh, family business throughout the years. We are just so excited for the opportunities to come on this. Um, we're just so, so grateful, incredibly grateful for everyone's time and efforts. As we have kept bugging everyone with this for a very long time, uh, we understand that it has been a very long journey for us all. Um, our family always wants to tread the direction that ensures all parties are happy with us. We believe that this was a good compromise. Um, we had so much fun putting together this proposal, we poured our heart and soul into this. Uh, we truly and deeply thank everyone for helping us continue this American dream.
Thank you.
David Allison, two oh three whiskey ridge.
Time for a review.
Councilmember Baylor will be very proud of you guys tonight, but yeah, one more thing to say too, regarding your budgets. Budgets are never easy and I appreciate the work you guys have been putting into it. Just keep in mind that. Be realistic on your expenses, but be very conservative on your revenue projections. With the revenues last year, councilman Baylor and others. Uh, were very concerned that the amounts that we put into some of those revenue columns were too much. And as it showed, now that we're ten of the year, that came true. So be conservative on your, on your revenues. Best head, uh, I would like to thank you all for, once again, for your volunteer efforts, it's never easy. But I'd like to also pass on the appreciation to your families for the, uh, sacrifice that they make as well. Uh, it's not an easy job and especially those of you guys on the phone, I, I know it's even harder to attend by phone. So I appreciate all the work that you've done. And congratulations to Sam and Cheryl and the staff for your audit. That's never easy, easy task either, so, uh, but the staff did an excellent job and. Uh, we appreciate that, so, thank you again.
Time to review with us. Your audience participation?
Uh, I have a deal on from one forty, six forty, Marina Road. I think you may say, I just wanna say thank you, but I wanna thank everybody for their time and consideration and for working with us on this, I do, so. Thank you.
I'm just feeling old because I remember I didn't go to school. Okay, um, council comments, let's start with councilmember.
Okay, I'd like to um, thank Cheryl and the finance department um, for an amazing audit. To have to redo an entire software. Package and then pull it out and switch back to what you were doing before with those problems is tremendous. And they did an excellent job pulling that off. I want to just tell the public that I'm not sure about the other council members. But moving forward, when you have comments regarding decisions that we make. I do not respond to threats. I do not respond to threats when they're sent in written form and presented by someone else. If you have something to say to us, come here and say it in person. And anytime that I am threatened at this table, I will not give you what you want. So know that moving forward. Otherwise, great meeting.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Sam, um, for this amazing, if there's a lot in here, the thing, or they got the, uh, the clip in place, so. I've said this before, one of the hardest things to do and one of the more, uh, I know consequential things to do have to do with land disposal. And then tonight, the huge part of land disposal and uh. I wanna thank, and zoning, they do an amazing job of doing a lot of that footwork for us, parents of these meetings. And um, I, and I, like ninety-nine percent of the time, uh, we'll go right along with whatever they recommend, because I know they do such good work. So they, it's good for us as councilmembers to be able to take what they do and. And make final decisions that best fit whatever we feel is good for the, the community at large, so um. Uh, gosh, great reports, the audit's fantastic, it's good, good to always see that, you know, they're, we're staying out of trouble. But like a sprout is gonna come and then they find it, so that's good to know. Yeah, and we appreciate everybody around the stable, staff, mayor, all council members, ones online, this is great for you to work with.
Yeah, kudos to the finance department, Cheryl, and um, all your team and, because I was probably. One of the better audits I've seen in a lot of years. Especially after Cordova Center, obviously. And kudos to planning and zoning Amanda, thanks for all the work you do with them, because it's. It is probably the beneficial commission to city council and I appreciate all that goes into that. I'm happy everybody came and spoke tonight, I know not everybody got what they wanted tonight, but um. I'm gonna reflect back on Eva Ikin who came up and was so thoughtful about. Opening the doors for us to compromise and that really was enabled me to um. Clear my decision, so, um, and then I just was gonna ask maybe. I'm not sure Kevin, or maybe it's um, Amanda, Skeet had their meeting tonight. Same time we were having our meeting, it would be nice to maybe ask them if they could share minutes of us and from their meetings. I don't know if, or we still haven't, you know, there was a lot on their agenda tonight. And if I didn't have an important council meeting, I wouldn't have gone to that, but it'd be nice for a little bit more communication.
I will send them an email, but I have asked them and let them know that they could be public, they're supposed to report.
Yep.
And we asked, and they did, add their budget back.
Okay, I requested um, from one of the members, well. Instead of my membership application, but I, I requested um, minutes, so that would just be nice to see. I mean, I know they're well aware, the city's, um, they're strict, so um. They'll just do, keep in forms.
Uh, so I will be available Thursday, the working listeners. Uh, texted me in private, hey, make sure they're not childcare.
uh, texted me in February, but here they're time for childcare. It was, absolutely. Uh, but I wanna thank staff. And then I also wanna bring up to the public who is listening. It's been said by other council members. They bring up what they want. They don't bring up the solution of how. What are we gonna sacrifice to have been what they want? And what was really real for me today was understanding the staff's hard decisions that they make. When we have a employee show up with their child and plead their case to, to see a young family lose their employment in Cordova is hard. And that really shows the situation and the gravity of the situation that the city is currently. And that's not even going in depth into the maintenance of the infrastructure and equipment that we have. And falling into the repair of failure, having equipment fail, that's putting people in harm's way. Trash truck, they have a short lifespan. You know, that could have been a lot worse. Uh, we have oil spill, we've had fuel spills. And to kick that can down the road further, further is just gonna come back and buy us a process for more money and so that is where we, we're at. And I thank staff for all the work that you guys are doing and I understand that you're making really hard decisions. And it's really easy to sit back and, you know, say, well, could have sure would have, and, uh, thankful to be on the seat right now and assist and be present. Thank everybody up at here, this here, awesome.
Sandra Adams.
This was a long one and, um, every meeting was a lesson for me. And how this whole process works, so thank you, Councilwoman Rainey, for reminding us that we need to stay consistent. And Councilwoman Sherman for sticking your neck out and proposing, but, um, I'm, I'm learning and, um, I will continue to do my homework. Um, one of the, the, I guess I also, again, thanks staff, we can't say that enough, so, um. But one of the things I wanted to just, uh, bring up is to pay attention to, uh, the candidates for superintendent of schools. That is a significant leader in the community. Um, and we have three hundred and, I wrote it down, three hundred and twenty-six. I think that was the number, no, three hundred and sixty-five. Students, um, who depend on the leadership of superintendent. And staff that rely on that person's leadership as well, so it's a key person in the community in the same way that this council is and, um, to participate in that process. And they're not easy to come by either, just so they're, you know, we might not have pretty many candidates. So, um, again, thank you, staff, and I'll stop that.
Council, Councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna say thank you to the public and all their, and all the passions and varieties that you showed up. I'll always take it. I, I appreciate it. Thank you. We talk about a lot of things during a lot of meetings, so like I've said, I'm glad there was something just controversial enough to get people to show up, so. Um, again, good, that is part of this process, uh, very a lot of work went into this packet from staff. Thank you for that, making it clear and concise. I mean, it was a long meeting, sure. We had talked and discussed about a lot of things. But this meeting could have been a lot longer if there wasn't good, clear, uh, concise information in the packets, so. Thank you. Thank you for learning from past meetings and how we can just continue to evolve and, and refine this process, so. Uh, I really appreciate that, um, and I, and I know that comes at a sacrifice of time also, so thank you. They, thank you. I know we've said, uh, a big kudos to the finance department, looking forward to our future there, looking forward to maybe it won't be quarterly meeting or quarterly updates like I would like, but at least a mid-year update of our financial resp- results and our, which direction we're heading. I think this, going into this next year is gonna be probably even more important than having those updates this current year, so. Um, it has, has helped in this budget process. Uh, it helped me, helped me to, uh, even a mid-year in June, knowing kind of which direction we're going, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Michelson.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'm really happy that we resolved some, some controversial issues tonight and I, I recognize not everyone might be happy, but that is how compromise works. Um, I'm gonna give you a quick UFA update. I, I know everybody's trying to get out of here, but there are some real important things that happened. I think the best news is that seafood sales in the US have gone up three percent in the last year, and so things are, are looking up for our industry. Going from the slump of twenty twenty-three. In addition, for, for our community, um, the big beautiful bill that passed, um, provides a lot of funding for the Coast Guard, the most that's ever been funded, um, twenty-two new cutters, four point five billion dollars for shoreside infrastructure, forty new helicopters, six new C one thirties. Um, I definitely think we should be advocating our, uh, federal delegation to, to make sure that our Coast Guard presence here continues to be strong and, um, looking at our Coast Guard housing, it looks like even though it's relatively new, it could use some more work. Additionally, they're gonna start looking at, um, the Marine Mammal Protection Act. Um, those of you that are fishermen or, are connected to fishermen in some way will certainly notice that the marine mammal population has skyrocketed in the last fifteen years. And so this is, is the first step in trying to disconnect the Endangered Species Act and the Marine Mammal Protection Act. Um, because as Doug Vincent Lang, who is our commissioner of fishing game, put it, we are sacrificing our ecology, um, because of marine mammals and, and that is n- not how we should be managing things. So anyway, um, there's a lot more I could talk about here, but yeah, I just really like to thank staff for the presentations. I'd like to thank, um, our finance department. I know these audits are a huge deal. And, um, and most importantly, the public for all the letters you've included, um, all the comments that you have and, um, showing up and participating in your city government. Thanks.
Thank you. While we, a lot of people send difficult decisions on the issues that we've been working through for months, it's not long since I've been there. Awful persuasion. I think with that, we can.
Madam Mayor, I move to enter executive session to discuss the potential removal of funding for specific employment positions from the twenty twenty-six budget, a personnel matter immediate knowledge of which would cost financial harm to the city. I'll second.
Moving to second into, moving to second session, do people wanna take the break first or just? Okay.
All right, well, just take the book, so no objection. Take a short recess?
Yes, a short recess.
And Cheryl's coming.
And extend our B A.
Yes, we are.
You got to the eleven?
Uh, we won't, we don't.
I don't remember.
So. So now because there, they probably, when it work is mine not gonna work either. Like if, can I share screen? You already started with you.
I stopped you too.
I casted.
Yeah.